Call to order for Board of Education Special Meeting, November 6, 2029-30. Lisa, take attendance.
All board members are present except for trustee Bank.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Watson, would you like to go through a general discussion, COVID data update?
Sure, thanks President Cohen. So we're going to give a brief update based on the latest COVID data that we have. So Corey or David, whoever's running the presentation, all right, we get to next slide, please. So this is the latest information from Oakland County Health Department that was shared with Oakland County Schools. This came out yesterday. As you can see, the trend line is still going up as far as percent positive and case rate. But there are some things that are remaining strong. Right now, healthcare capacity, strength is strong as far as assessment of bed availability and hospital capacity. And then testing, tracing, and containment infrastructure. We were on a call with Oakland County Health Department yesterday, and they feel that they're still really strong in this area, that they have enough testing, that they're able to trace, and just the containment infrastructure as far as getting back to people they feel confident there. When we look at the total Oakland County cases reported by age group, we can see that the trend continues to go up. But it's between those 19 to 49, and that is where we're seeing a real significant increase. The only level or only case group that's kind of leveled out is those 90 and plus. The cases remain basically the same from last week. Next slide. So looking at it at national level, when we reported a couple of days ago, the United States is roughly about 80,000 cases per day on a rolling seven-day average. Right now, we're approaching close to 100,000 per day new COVID cases on a rolling average. Next slide. So the reason we're having the meeting today, we know we've been following it all along, we've been pulling data. Yesterday, we went into the red for new cases for 100,000. So we've reached over that 25% threshold, which triggers us having a board meeting today. This is something we've looked at since August 20th, when we approved the metrics that we'd used as far as reopening and getting students back to school. Unfortunately, we've actually come to the day where we needed to have a meeting. I think we were all optimistic and hopeful that we would never be in this point, but this is currently where we are with the latest data. Again, for percent positive and case rate, it's a seven-day move in average with a three-day lag for accuracy. All information being pulled from the MI.gov website. Next slide. So looking at new cases between October 30th until November 5th, you can see throughout the state of Michigan that the cases have continued to go up with most categories and most counties being red. Also, looking at just different data points, making sure we're looking at everything. If you look at the graph top right, COVID-19 new cases per day. You can see where we were in April, we went down in June and July, we had an uptick in August. I remember sitting at the October 8th board meeting, and I've said this numerous times, where the numbers were pretty good. Hopeful that we consider a different option, not in this direction, but a different direction, obviously. As you can see, just how far or how high they've gone. And then looking at some Oakland County Health Division or Department data from October 6th to today, the number of positive COVID cases for the county has increased more than 615%. Again, harkening back to that October 8th meeting where a lot of us were very optimistic, we'd be moving in a different direction based on the data. It is completely shifted since that time. Next slide. So this is something we talked about on the board meeting on Wednesday night. What would happen if we hit red? Right? And so that's a follow-up from that. That 11:05, we hit red. Today, we're having our emergency board meeting, which we told our community we would schedule for the next day. We also talked about the transition, you know, K through 8, C, DHH, preschool and prep. 11:09, no school for students. 11:10 asynchronous. 11:11 distance learning. For early on, BHHS, Bowers Academy, IA, distance learning, starting the 9th, continues the 10th and 11th. Wing Lake, 11:09, no school for students. 11:10 asynchronous. 11:11 distance learning, and then Bloomington closed. Let me back up to BHHS as far as the transition. That transition for BHHS is similar to the one for the elementary, sorry, for our K through 8. For example, Monday, we had to close the high school because we didn't have enough staff. The staffing issue is still a problem, even though we're considering going distance learning. For example, yesterday, talking to the elementary principals, they were on the verge of not having enough staff based on the number of staff members that are in quarantine and those that potentially could be in quarantine. So we made the decision for staffing reasons to temporarily close the high school on Monday. Tuesday was the teacher prep day. Wednesday was an asynchronous day, and then Thursday was distance learning. That's why they're able to continue. Looking at K through 8, Monday is the transition day as far as transitioning lessons to distance learning. For K through 5, this is a major shift. Our K, or sorry, our 6 through 12, they've been teaching concurrently the whole time. So they've been doing both in-person and online. So when we talk about what it looks like K through 5, it's a little bit different. Also, we've had some parents K through 5, because of the number of COVID cases, they have not allowed their child to return to the building, some of them for a couple of days, some for them over a week. So on Monday, we'll also need our staff to get materials ready for our K through 5 students. So this is a pause to in-person instruction, but instruction will still continue. Next slide. So immediately, and we've talked about this numerous times before, we're always planning backward, we're always planning where we're at, and we're always planning forward. So right now, with the consideration of pausing in-person instruction and going to distance learning, we know we'll need to plan there to have the same type of high-quality instruction that took place at the beginning of the year. We also know we'll need to plan for a return to in-person, and we'll have the same priorities. One positive, if there is a positive, is that we've done the hybrid model, and we've done it successfully. We know what it looks like, we know the bus routes, we know what we need to do. I don't feel we're going to need the same amount of phase in time when it's time to return as we did before. The first time we did it, it was new. The protocols are new, procedures were new. We needed to make sure everything was going to work smoothly. So I'm optimistic we can cut down that time. But I know people will be anxious to move from distance learning to return to in-person learning. Next slide. So how did we get here? June, July, and August, we were waiting on local, state, and national information and guidance regarding returning to school. That information was lacking. So we worked with school districts nationally and internationally to find a way to bring our students back in what we can consider the safest way possible. As part of that, at the 8/20/20 board meeting, we talked about the Harvard Global Institute model and the different color bands and thresholds, green, yellow, orange, and red. And based on that, we made a decision that we would phase our students back in and that we would follow the metrics that were established, looking for local, state, national guidelines. Those guidelines have started to come out, but some of them are inconclusive and are rapidly changing. Next slide. That is clearly where we're at, and that is the data we have to share this morning.
Thanks, Pat. We'll go around with questions or comments. Jackie?
Yeah, thanks, Pat, for the analysis. I think that with the recent quarantines, we've already had some struggles with our high, with our teach, you know, being, having enough teachers. So this just comes on top of that. What do you think will be the most difficult part of this transition?
I think it depends on the individual parent and, you know, what our staff needs are. You know, technology-wise, we should be in fairly decent shape. One of my biggest concerns is... Give me a minute. Sorry, I need a minute.
Yeah, take your time. It's a very stressful time.
For a lot of our students, home is not the safest place for them. And it breaks my heart knowing that we're in this situation, and we know how dangerous COVID is. But we also know for a lot of students, school is the place that they're the safest. And not everyone has a good home life, and my heart breaks for those kids, sorry. So I think that will be one of the most difficult things.
Is there anything, is there anything we can do with counselors or social, I mean, you don't have to answer now, but maybe there's something we could do as a board to support you with the counselors and the social workers, et cetera? So you don't have to answer now, but I understand what you mean. Thank you.
I mean, and then kind of just going up from there. Another difficult part is, you know, for everyone not seeing their students in person. When you sign up to be a teacher, you want to see the kids in person. That's the best part of the job, right? We'll do everything we can to provide a safe place for our students, whether it's in-person or remote. And we know it's a heavy lift for all of our community. And I think it's important that we all try to support each other as best as possible. We may not all be in agreement with everything, but we're all passionate about the kids.
Thank you, thank you for your honesty. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Jackie. Thanks, Pat. Howard?
Yes, two questions. So the model we're using, we adopted in August of, August 20th, at the end of August, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that was 10 weeks ago.
Yes.
Granted, the rulebook we set up 10 weeks ago has us doing certain things. But that rulebook is open modification. Have you and Leonard been able to review what has been transpiring in the scientific community over the last 10 weeks? And as the Harvard model or other comparable, you know, best-in-class models change their targeting and their cut points between August and here we are at the beginning of November?
Different models have different thresholds. But the information we're seeing at the national level from AASA, as far as, you know, polling over 1,900 superintendents, is that they're not seeing large transmissions in schools of COVID. And then the Oakland County Health Department supports that data as well. Again, this is right this moment, and it continually changes. For example, Oakland County Health Department reported, according to their metrics, we were in C a week ago. Right? And then reported that we're in E. So the Harvard model's capturing those same metrics, and COVID is definitely on the rise. I mean, 615% increase, and I don't know if it's going to slow down or not. Regardless of what metrics we're looking at right now, they're all showing that steady rise.
I understand that. So let's differentiate between the data and the models and the metrics and those cut points. So let's get, let's get specific then. So we use the Harvard model. If we, I mean, I have not looked, but I have to rely on you and Leonard. Has the Harvard model evolved, or is the Harvard model of November 6th equivalent to the Harvard model of August 20th?
I would say it's evolved. There's some different data out there that we could also look at.
Well, it's not the, because what I'm, here's what I'm trying to get. Instead of using, instead of locking in the Harvard model from the 20th, if we use, if the Harvard model has changed, possibly, I don't know, I need, I need facts. But if the Harvard model changed, and there's a new Harvard model out there as of today, and this is the model, has nothing to do with the actual on-the-ground data, this is the model. If the model is changed, if we apply the current data to the new model, would we still be in the red?
Yeah, at this point, every model we've looked at would have us in the red based on the cases.
Oh, okay, that's, that's very, very helpful. So, okay, that's, so that's number one. Number two. The governor still has us in Phase 3, correct? I'm sorry, Phase 4, I misspoke. We're still in Phase 4 as a, as a region, correct?
You are correct. My understanding is the governor does not have authority to move us to a different phase. It would have to be the Director of Health and Human Services to give you the stripped of those powers.
When I, when I say the governor, the administration, whether it's the county, the state Health Department, or the governor, or the state legislature, but someone in Lansing, or some organization in Lansing, still has us in Phase 4, correct?
As best I understand, I do not know if, when she was stripped of those powers, it also made the phases go away. I can't answer that.
Okay, so let's assume we're in Phase 4, for argument's sake. That means that the decisions we're being asked to make today is our own school district decision, not something that is being dictated by some outside force?
Correct. Governor had a press conference yesterday, she did not close school.
Okay, so that means that we have the choice to use the buildings or not use the buildings. We do not have to vacate the buildings 100%. Here's where I'm going. If we decide to go virtual, obviously, not only does it hurt education in general, because we know that virtual education is not as effective as, as person-to-person or even hybrid education, but irrespective of that, there is an impact on parents and families in terms of now that they've got elementary kids in the home. Can we not go 100% and say, "Everyone out of the building"? But can we utilize the classrooms or the auditoriums, gymnasiums, et cetera, and allow kids to come into school using the buses, sitting at laptops and, or maybe having a facilitator to assist them? They're still doing virtual learning, but some, and this is a subset of the children, would be in the building, allowing their parents to go to work?
I understand exactly what you're asking. If that's something the board wants us to look at, we can definitely do that. It's also a staffing question. I can't tell you right now, today, definitively, yes, we would be able to staff and do that.
Well, the first question is not on the supply, but really on the demand. The first question is, how many of our parents would want that ability? And therefore, we then have to match the teach, the workforce to that demand coming from the parents. How long would that process take to assess how much the demand is from the parents? And therefore, what the supply is, and to try to find out how much of the demand we could accommodate that way?
I want to make sure I understand, trustee Baron understands you. You're asking, can we, if we told the community in, say, a gray band, K through 8, K through 5, how many of you would like your children to come to school during the day, be in school, and be supervised by a parent or something like that? And then after having that information, find out whether or not we would have staff?
Correct. Now, if this would assume, that is correct, it would assume that we're still going 100% virtual. It is not, it's not hybrid, it's virtual, but it's virtual with the option of being able to have that virtual in the buildings.
Keep in mind that demand can't dictate supply. We are so short-staffed, we were barely functioning. We closed the high school, right? We were on the verge of closing our elementary schools. This model we used with the Black Hawk Extended Care barely could staff that. We're short people. Basically, what you're asking for is childcare, and can we provide it?
Correct.
I don't know if we have the staff to do that.
Well, can, can we at least, I mean, it is not up to the board or me to dictate, you know, supply and demand and how to figure it all out. That's, that's a how, that's, that's your job. But we need to, what I'm trying to do is find the compromise. If we do go, if we're in the red and therefore need to go virtual, we, because the, the powers that be outside of our organization have not dictated that we must vacate the buildings 100%, we do have the flexibility to kind of have our cake and eat it too. And what I'm asking is that you and your administration, pretty quickly, if we really are going to be going with the the timeline of the 9th, the 10th, and the 11th, as you said on, on slide, you know, two slides ago, that we provide that as quick, that we get that data, or that you get that data as quickly as possible, and try by Monday or Tuesday to have as much of that service for parents who need it as possible.
I'm going to be honest, that wouldn't be feasible, especially on that type of timeline. Keep in mind, the majority of our pairs are going to be used to support online learning. So they're moving from support in the building to supporting online. We, we need subs. This is not the first time I've said this. We don't have people, and we're going to continue to have more and more going to quarantine. I just don't see it as being feasible. There's no issue with asking, but we need more pairs than what we have. So if you were, if I'm teaching and I've got a parent that's assisting me in the classroom, and I'm going to, you know, distance learning, that parent's coming with me. So we need a whole different set of pairs to do that.
But we, as you said, this is, in a sense, childcare. Maybe we could have bus drivers. It is not up to me to dictate how, and that's your job. All I'm saying is, we need to be as innovative and as creative as possible to try to mitigate any of the angst that parents are going to be having. And as you even said earlier, when you were talking to trustee El-Sayed, that many of the students' home lives are not the optimal. And whether, for whatever reason that is, and I won't go into, you know, the factors. But giving as much flexibility as possible, I think, is what we as a district should be doing. Thank you.
So one last comment. You know, the values that we hold as a district is to provide the best instruction possible, right? To help our students achieve their dreams. While we understand, we know there's a need for childcare. The main focus is on educating the children. Again, I know for a lot of our kids, home is not safe. It isn't. And I wish there were better answers right now, and more we could do. But our main focus has to be on delivering the best possible education for every single student we can.
As I said two months ago, there are three things we're trying to balance. And every school district in the state and country are trying to balance. Safety and health, education, and when I turn the economy. And when I say the economy, it's giving flexibility to parents to be able to go off to work and not, and, because, you know, school provides not only education, but basically daycare during the day, so parents can, are free to have a life, 9 to 5 during the day, or whenever school is open. So we're always balancing those three. Safety is paramount in my mind. We can't hurt kids or the community health-wise. Education and economy are kind of neck and neck in my mind, and this is values. But we need to be safe and then provide both education and not, as much as possible, not hurt the economy. And that's, all I'm asking is kind of a balance between those latter two. I mean, by, because we're in the red, we're taking safety paramount, and that's good. But giving parents the flexibility of the parents who need it and require it because they have a day job that they have to go to, I think that's something we definitely should make sure that we do the best possible, the best we can on trying to help the parents out. Thank you.
Thanks, Howard. Jennifer?
Hi there. So just a couple of quick things. When we, we adopted the Harvard metrics in August because we had to have them, right? We, we had happened in school for months, we, the cases were on the rise, we had no idea what was coming. And my own personal concern, which I believe I expressed at the meeting, was that our school district, our, our buildings could not be the source of a community outbreak. And we, we had, as I recall, we had some discussion, it may not have been long, that these parameters that we would set up might have to change over time when we know more. So that was two and a half months ago. We went into the school year with safety first, having changed from a three-foot option to a no-in-building option. And then we took, at the time, I thought our return to hybrid dates were a little aggressive. But I said to myself, let's just, let's see what happens, right? Let's take the baby steps, let's do the experiment, let's, let's see what's happening. So now we are, what, six to seven weeks into having kids in the building? I think we started a phase in third week in September. And, and our experience as a district is that we have had cases. They, they have popped up kind of like popcorn, one here, one there. I think there have been 30, if I'm reading the dashboard right, to date for the students, 11 for the staff over a course of five to six weeks. So, you know, whatever that average is. To my knowledge, none of those cases have resulted in hospitalizations or deaths. And we know that there's been no deaths, thank God. So what I, so mission accomplished with safety. And what we know from our own district and what we know from reading about the landscape of America is that the classroom setting does not seem to be a source of spread, okay, with these precautions in place. The cases, and in our own system, the cases that we've seen, we have been told from when the student or the staff member was not in the school. And nor have those persons transmitted to others that they are around while they're in the school building. So knowing that, what, and also what we have learned is that the, there have been student-to-student outbreaks on sports teams. Okay, that, that is our evidence, that is our lived experience to date. So knowing that, also, I'll throw in there, that cases are definitely up in a, in a huge way. I mean, we can't dispute that, and we have to take that very seriously. But let's look at what's happening with those cases. Very few are going to hospital. Okay, I think Oakland County went from an 80% ICU capacity, I think they're at a 70% now, so full, full green light capacity. 2% hospitalization rate, I think, in the county. So of those people who test positive, 2% end up in the hospital. And then the death rate has dropped precipitously in, in July, basically. So, so for whatever reason, and I won't speculate, I don't think the vi, I don't, we don't know the virus has mutated or anything like that. My own personal thought is that the treatment is, is much more savvy and sophisticated. So fewer people going to hospital, much fewer people, much fewer people dying and, and none in our own system. So knowing those things, um, I think that it is premature to change course today. Um, I think that it is okay to say that the metrics we put in place two and a half months ago, that we know more now, um, and that we are not necessarily bound by those to just knee-jerk the closure of schools based on a number on a piece of paper. I think we have to follow our lived experience and the, the living biologic behavior of this disease. I think the imperative for the kids to be in school is very high, um, going up as age goes down. Um, and that we, you know, we, we can go to virtual at any time. We have the infrastructure. We know, we know how to do that. Um, I don't think we have enough evidence to do it right now. However, I, I would be in favor of suspending sports because that has shown to cause cases. Um, so that, that is how I feel right now. Um, best instruction, 100%. We know, I mean, that, in my mind, that's a slightly different conversation because we know that the hybrid model has instructional flaws. I, I think it may be too much today to talk about changing the infrastructure, as Howard alluded to, but I also agree. I, I, in August, we asked for an exploration of our, of alternative spaces, the gyms, the cafeterias, cafeteriums, to use as instructional spaces. And I, I'm not really sure why that hasn't come to fruition. Um, I, I think that as these cases go up, we should be exploring that very heavily right now, um, in an effort to keep the kids, um, in school right now. Um, but
Trustee, we have used those spaces.
Okay.
Spaces, and we've been using them since day one.
Okay, my apologies. I, I misspoke then because I wasn't, you know, I, I'm not in all the buildings, obviously, so I, I don't, I only know from, from what my kids tell me. Um, but anyway, that, that is what I think. I think that we are not at a community I, I think that Bloomfield Hills Schools today is not a community threat for this disease. And I think that under those circumstances, we should stay for now, um, and keep with the model that we have. And then we just have to watch very carefully what all of these high cases, which are expected to get higher, what that really means. Are we seeing in-class transmission? Are we seeing more hospitalizations and more deaths? Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Lisa?
Um, all right, I'm gonna start with a question. Shocking. Pat, does the recommendation to, um, to temporarily eliminate face-to-face include athletics and co-curriculars? Stopping noses? No? Okay.
That was not.
Okay, um, I, I, first of all, I, I think this is a heartbreaking decision. It always has been, and it doesn't get any easier. Um, we started the year all remote. We had a lot of the same concerns. I hope that we've taken, um, you know, since March this time to figure out how to be able to connect with families and that we're better equipped to get help to families that are homebound and need it. Um, and students who are struggling with, um, with issues at home. I know that we have resources in Oakland County. We have counseling, um, available to us through the county and through the state. And, and I really hope that we have, um, taken the time over the last nine months to, to strengthen those connections and, and utilize those resources. Um, I, I think that the numbers are so high right now, and there's still so much unknown. I did hear the governor speak yesterday. And I know that right now, we don't have hospitalization problems, but other states that have had high numbers like this longer than us are seeing hot increase of hospitalizations and deaths. So, uh, I, I always want to err on the side of caution with that. One death is too many deaths. Um, I, I think by our metrics, um, that we have promised to follow, they have to work both ways. So, uh, days ago, when some of the metrics indicated we were already in the red zone, we said, you know what? Now isn't the time to change the metrics or the data source. Change the rules of the game in the middle of the game. So, uh, I would not at all be opposed to taking the precaution and, and taking the recommendation to close schools, provided that, uh, we continuously study deaths and hospitalization and capacity of hospitals. Those, to me, are two big indicators of how safe it is to keep kids in school. And if that means changing the metrics, I'm, we all for that. I think that's just something we have to discuss when the numbers aren't 615, 50% increase, uh, when, when they're so out of control. But it's a discussion we should be having. Um, I, I, I can see the agony, uh, of having to make this choice, and, and I know that we all feel it, but, um, you know, the agony of watching serious illness and death, it, it just overrides that for me. Uh, I'm gonna tell you my problem, so. I, I'm not comfortable keeping athletics and co-curriculars open while closing everything else down. That, to me, sends an incredibly hypocritical message to the community about our priorities. We are, like you said, our top priority is educating students, not providing co-curriculars and athletics. Those are great things to add as supplements to education, but cannot be prioritized in place of education. Um, it, it presents a problem for the vast majority of our students, K through 12, that don't participate in those things. We have an equity situation where a very select few are able to be in school or on school grounds and participate in social and other activities while it's precluded. Everyone else is precluded from that. And I for, for very, very, very many reasons, uh, I, I would be against it. So wha- what I'm suggesting is before we make the choice about what the recommendation is for K through eight, that we take a separate vote and see whether we want to also close all activities, extra, co-curricular and athletics. Um, because my decision about the other one will be predicated on that. If, if we're deeming it safe to have athletics open, we can't then close schools, in my mind. It, it's just too hypocritical, and, and it's not what we're about as a school district. I want to be safe. I think we should stop all of it right now. The numbers are skyrocketing. Uh, we can come back i- as an emergency meeting a week from now, if hospital capacity remains stable and, uh, if there are still no deaths, and revisit it. Um, I, I like that idea, but I, I'll just say, uh, I, I'm not gonna vote in favor of closing school while athletics is still, um, and co-curriculars are still going on.
Anything, any other questions, Lisa? Um, it's my turn. I have a question, maybe it's Pat or Leonard. So, Pat, we received in, um, a letter from Oakland County Health. This is, um, going on top of what, um, trustee Cook indicated about, um, it not spreading within the school grounds in terms of being a community outbreak. Can you, or, or Leonard, maybe, again, just maybe expand on what Oakland County Health, um, you know, indicated in that letter and their ultimate recommendation? And, and they indicated in the letter they are in, in Level E, and their recommendation in terms of schools remaining open, you know, or closed?
Joe, I, I can definitely speak to that. So, there's two different sets of data. Let's look at the national data. The national data that is being run by Brown University and the superintendent groups from throughout the country, of which 1,900 are participating in, including myself. The data is showing at this moment, and I want to emphasize this moment because things are continually changing, is that schools who have strong mitigation, you know, factors, six feet of social distancing, wearing a mask, that's not being spread in schools. Are there data outliers? Yes, we know that. The Oakland County Health Department information shows that it's not being spread in schools. And so they've been recommending to school districts that you shut classrooms or you shut buildings if you have mass spread. Now, that's one part. The other part is just a staffing issue. You know, when you have so many people in quarantine, sometimes you just can't staff a building like the high school. But that's what the current data shows. As far as their metrics they've come up with, you know, they're looking at, if you're red, considering a 14-day pause. We have some other districts that are deciding that they're going to pause in-person instruction, and some are going to continue on and move forward. Does that kind of answer President Cohen's question?
Yeah, no, that, 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 that answers the question.
Oh, also, I'm sorry. Oakland County Health Department also said a lot of the areas are seeing transmission during the Halloween gatherings. The faux homecoming parties that people had, bars, restaurants. So really looking at mass gatherings when the precautions aren't in place. We're seeing a lot of transmissions there, and that's why you're seeing that case rate 19 to 49 really exploding. I know they're also concerned what Thanksgiving may look like. Governor Whitmer touched on that yesterday, saying maybe this is his home Thanksgiving year, um, and also what winter break may look like.
Yeah, no, that, that answered my question. And, and Pat, I do understand.
Sorry, President Cohen. There's a little bit more. I want to be accurate with, because Oakland County Health Department. If I can share more information from them?
Yeah, absolutely. Sure is.
So also during our, our meeting with them yesterday, Oakland County Health Department shared they're not looking at cases by itself. Uh, they said they're looking at different from last spring. This is in their words. Testing is up, low death rate. Hospitals are able to keep up at the moment. And that they're looking at it in total, totality. And Oakland, Oakland County Health Department said they will not be coming in to tell school districts to close. They will give guidance on, you need to close this classroom or you need to close this building based on transmission that may occur. Again, I just want to share, so everything is completely transparent. Um, that is what they shared with us yesterday.
Thanks. Um, so, and, and getting to your earlier point, I think we all agree as a board, you know, what happened at the high school, if you don't have staff, you don't have staff. If elementary school gets to a point when there's, there's no staff because of quarantine, safety precautions, you know, we need to close what, the applicable buildings, et cetera. Um, again, my point, agreeing with, um, trustee Cook, that probably, and, and I think, Pat, you emphasized it, probably the safest place, K through eight, assuming we have the staff, is probably the precautions we have in the building. So, um, I, I agree. I, I don't think this is the time, um, to, to change course, um, yet. Yes, Pat?
Apologize to interrupt. Also,
That's fine.
Oakland County Health Department has asked schools to send them their mitigation factors. We know we've done this in the ECOL. We, we know we've presented the mitigation factors to the board numerous times. Um, but we'll be submitting that to Oakland County again, or Health Division, for review to see whether or not they think we have all the proper precautions in place. And they've asked us to submit that by November 11. Again, just trying to make sure I share everything that was shared with me, and so everything's completely transparent.
Yep. No, no, great. So, so again, I think in, in this environment, I think you kind of touched it, some of the stuff that's going on outside. And then, um, I guess, in, in, in my opinion, if we do end up closing schools and K through eight's home, I, I feel there probably is higher risk for students because families are gonna do what they're gonna do in terms of pods and trying to get that social interaction. Probably during the course of the day, the safest place for students because of all those precautions that, uh, Superintendent Watson, you and your team have put in place, i- is probably the, the safest in terms of, of getting, um, COVID, probably the safest place that they cannot get it would be in, inside the schools, and they may have more risk outside the schools. So at this time, um, you know, based on, um, the, um, motion, you know, I, I will, I will vote to keep, you know, to not change things and to keep what we're doing right now. Um, thanks again, Pat, for everything you're doing, presentation, calling this meeting, you know, and, uh, the special meeting, you know, to talk through all the things that are going on and, and everything that you're doing in terms of mitigating and, and providing a safe environment for our students. Appreciate that. Um, I have no other questions. Cynthia?
Thank you, President Cohen. Um, and I appreciate all the discussion from each of my colleagues. Um, I think you've, um, each of you have, uh, highlighted key issues that are important in our decision on this, at this time. Um, I, I do agree with trustee Ephros that it makes sense, in my mind, that if we are, would go, uh, all virtual for our instructional program, that we should be doing the same thing consistently with our other activities. Um, it's an important decision. Um, as I sit here with my grandchild, who I go many months in between seeing because of the virus, um, there is nothing like being in person with someone, uh, with a teacher, with a child. And yet, we, we really do need to be, be taking care of our children, but also our staff and our community. Um, I, I understand that the county is being, um, reticent to tell local jurisdictions what they should do. That is up to us, um, area by area. I think we've shown that we can very successfully deliver virtual instruction for our students. And considering that we do have metrics, that we have, our families made decisions based on, in August, um, that we should be consistent with a model that we voted on back in August. If we want to revisit it, that's fine. But in my opinion, right now, we should be consistent with the decision we made back then, which would be to, um, regrettably, uh, have our students be going virtual. I understand, Paul, you make good commentary about the very fine job that our professionals have been able to do to put metric, but measures in place to keep students as safe as possible in our buildings. But, and, and I do understand that we have concern that people, um, want to be out and about if their children are not in the buildings during the school day, but I don't think we are where we were back in May in terms of community interaction. We are closer to what the, the spread of disease was back in March than we were in the springtime, where people are inside more. Um, where it is, and whether it's at someone's home or, um, some other kind of venue. And, um, you know, we are, though we are not as a nation on a lockdown, we have to be much more cautious than we were in the springtime because people are going to be indoors a lot more. I think we need to be consistent with the metrics that we chose to do back then. Um, I hear what you're saying about seeing what we are, what it might be possible to do, some, have some supervised, um, uh, childcare spaces, if it's possible. Um, it would be great if we can do that, but I know that we are also operating with diminished, diminished, um, capacity, and we have to respect our administrators and what they are capable of being able to provide. So I believe that's up to Pat to be able to figure what is, got to be his highest priority in taking care of our children.
Thanks, Cynthia. Do you have any other questions? I know, um, um, Lisa, you have another question, and then Howard? I forgot which order, but you can go, oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer. Jennifer, then Lisa, maybe Howard, I can check the chat, but, uh, uh, Jennifer?
Yeah, so thank you. Um, I really appreciate this discussion, Superintendent Watson, and I, I would encourage that we meet regularly, as often as needed, to stay up to date with everything, because things, well, we've learned that this, the virus is obviously so contagious that that means that things can change on a dime. Things can go up very fast, things can go down very fast. So, so that is something we have to be mindful of. But I just wanted to bring up the, the letter that we did get from But I just wanted to bring up the the letter that we did get from the Health Department yesterday, which. Um, did a- a- as has been the the trajectory, it did tell us we have the liberty to to do. A- as we see fit. Um, but if I was reading that letter correctly. I I believe the intention of that letter was to say. Um, it is it is fine with us if for for districts to stay the course with whatever plan they have already put in place. Um, so I just wanted to mention that the the letter wasn't perfectly clear, but but that is what I I got out of that. Um, also, I just wanted to say for the community, this is probably obvious for people who have kids in high school. Um, but for the K eight community as well, because the cases are rising. We we the high school is now all virtual because of staffing, right? It's it's not because it's an indirect consequence. It's not a direct safety measure. Um, so what can happen, you know, my my fear was disease from the inside out, school buildings out. But what can happen as cases go up and more young people are exposed, you know, out there. The cases could be coming from the outside in, right? And so because of so many teachers being quarantined, and I think I I would like to understand that better. Cause we seem to have a high rate of quarantine at the high school. Um, but if that if that happens, if if mandatory, whatever the Health Department dictates are for quarantines. Starts to kick in because there are more cases regardless of severity of cases. Um, there could become a staffing issue at the K eight level. Um, which could preclude, I I'm ask, I guess I'm asking you Superintendent if if that could preclude. Meeting in person the same way that it has done in the high.
That is correct. If we're at a point where we have in-person learning and we can't staff a building. We would have to close that building until we could fully staff.
Yeah, so I just I just want to to let share with the community that that these are two related. But but different issues in terms of running the schools right now.
Yes, that is correct.
And and one, sorry, one more thing. Um Superintendent Watson, when you said before. Mask gatherings, no protection, no precautions, I I I mean, just on a philosophical level. One has to ask oneself, why we the school taking having limited gatherings with. With high precautions, right? We we should come first, right? Education needs to come first. So a- apparently there's nothing we can do about mass gatherings in restaurants and bars and parties. Um, because our upper legislators have not chosen to do anything about that. But I I I take umbrage and exception to the fact that schools should not have to bear the burden. Of that by by har- harming their own operations. I I feel that we we have to take a stand. And do what's right for our students and for our education. Um, e- even in the face of greater society not helping us at all. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Uh Howard and Lisa?
All right. Um, I had four issues and some of them have been highlighted by some of my counterparts here. Um, I agree, I want to reinforce what Jennifer just said in terms of you have the health issues. And then tangentially, you have the staffing issues that uh are exacerbated because of the health issues. So um, we need to have Pat, you know, monitor the staffing considerations and. Do it not only in the high school and the elementary school or wherever it happens to be, where we just logistically don't have enough people to uh. To do the jobs that we need to do. Um, second is um what Secretary Ephros said, absolutely. That we need to have a first vote on sports and co-curriculars. Um, and because that's a much, I think, simpler decision than um in terms of uh. Moving to eliminating that or stopping that because of health. Um, before we ever talk about the the education uh situation. Uh, third, um, as uh trustee uh Cook or Dr. Cook just said. Um, it's things coming from the outside in because people can be asymptomatic. They can bring the disease into the building unknowingly and then spread it around and then it goes out. It, you know, a spreader situation, it goes back into the community. So as the community gets higher and higher. Uh, affection infection rates that uh schools are not in an island off by themselves. And because people are congregating, even though we try to do our best, but during lunchtime and things like that. There will be opportunities to spread the disease unknowingly because people are asymptomatic. And especially we know that children not only are asymptomatic, but even have very limited um um symptoms. So even if they're symptomatic, it might appear like a cold and therefore um would not be possibly suspected as um. Um, as COVID. So um as the community becomes higher and higher infected. It will have, you know, schools cannot be sitting there, you know, in a total isolation. They they are part of the community. Um, to um President um Colin's comments. We have a set of metrics. We have to follow the rules that we set for ourselves. Now. I, as I said in my first comment, if we want to change the rulebook, we can change the rulebook. But we can't override the rulebook, meaning we can't say, well, the rules say shut it down. But we're not going to shut it down because then you say, okay, well then when would you shut it down? We basically, you know, we we've done an override. That's not fair. It's like putting a penny in a in a in a circuit breaker box or in a in a fuse. You don't want to do that. If we're going to say we want to keep schools open, and that's a possibility. We have to set up the rules. We have to have Leonard and and Superintendent Watson. Give us a new set of metrics that we're gonna follow. But we can't just tear up the rulebook, throw it away and ignore it and then leave this meeting. Cause then, you know, when do you stop? So we need a set of rules. Either we stay with the old rules and we and we close. Or we go with a new set of rules and we stay open, but we can't do the interim. We can't can't, you know, use the same rulebook but ignore it. That just doesn't, that's not right.
Lisa?
I I I did forget to add, um, when. The we had the bi-monthly meeting of the Oakland County Health Department and Board of Education. And I I know Jennifer and I were there, Paul, I think you were too. They said they gave us some outrageously high percentage of their contact tracing going right back to sports. Not to uh per se in schools. Um, they. It was something around or even maybe over ninety percent of the cases that they were able to contact trace. Now, I think uh the contact tracing's been imperfect because. The, as they say, the labs take two days to get the results back and um. E- e- and as Howard points out, you know, how many people have are positive and don't even know they're positive. Let alone, you know, people who are afraid to get tested because they're really afraid to be in quarantine. So there there's so many um things. That chip away at being able to say at this point with this high number, schools are safe to me. I I don't think that we can make that promise. I don't think that we can say they're safer than being at home. Um, I don't think that they're the safest place kids can be. There's absolutely no evidence to show that. We have quite a few cases popping up daily and it's gonna spread exponentially because that's what it does. So. Um, I would really, you know, and again, uh Howard said it. To changing the metrics in the middle, i- isn't something that it's it's gonna erode all of the trust that we have. Um, in the metrics themselves and in our methodology in terms of making big decisions like this. Um, we can revisit them at a time when the impact isn't. Closing schools or keeping them open. Um, but right now I don't think it's the time to do it. And, you know, to that, it I don't, I I'm not sure where it falls on the agenda, but I would really urge us to take. Two separate votes, one, you know, co-curriculars and and um athletics. First, and then a vote on whether um to accept the recommendation of closing K through eight. Um, and last, I just want to echo what Jennifer said about, you know, the numbers are high. And right now, best guess and best contact tracing says it is coming from other sources. So. You know, to make some overreaching statement, we have to talk about priorities. I mean. You know, other countries. Close everything else and keep schools open because that's the priority. And I can't wait for this country to get to the point where schools are the priority. Where teachers are uh treated with the respect that they deserve and are paid accordingly. And where we really start to place the value on education that it deserves.
Thanks Lisa, I have a I have a couple of comments. Um, Howard, getting to your point. Um, I think it was always um the metrics would dictate a recommendation. Superintendent Watson would make to the board and, you know, based, you know, it's 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 not overriding process. It's it's taking into account everything. And personally, I I still, I believe that the safest place how we've set it up. For students in this environment, even though we are in red, even though we're in E and Oakland County Health has not come in and shut it down. And I think part of it is because they feel that the safest place for these students as opposed to being home, you know, would be in school. Um, as opposed to what they may or may not be doing. You know, that could be just a a personal opinion and, you know, not. You know, I understand we set a process and, you know, and and for me, I I still think that is the safest place. Bearing aside what staffing, you know, needs we have and if elementary doesn't have staffing, we we don't have staffing. And we all agree, if you don't have staff, you're not gonna, you know, open a building. And that's what we did in the high school and that's what we would do at elementary, you know, et cetera. Um, so that's one point. Second point, you know, of course, you know, we can take a vote. Um, you know, regarding co-curricular and and athletics. Again, I I still feel for a lot of our students across the district, I know we only had it in the high school and we're about to look at. Whether it's virtual clubs or maybe winter sports for um six through eight or co-curricular activities. Again, um, and this is a tribute, Pat, his team, coaches, um athletic director across the district. Um, we have put protocols and processes in place that, you know, the fall sports and and many people know, I've been to many of them. Have been, you know, they have done an excellent extraordinary job keeping that as safe as possible. I know it sounds hard to think that a football game with a thousand people in there, marching band, palms. Football team, et cetera. But again, it it was an extraordinary event. Um, the these things, um, you know, again, you know, just focus on safety, not how much the event itself means to the students. Performing, spending years upon years upon years, training for this moment, and many of them will never have this opportunity again. This, you know, because they're not gonna be playing in college, they're not gonna be doing, you know, some of these extracurricular activities. Um, as well as they will be doing it in college. But, you know, what um Pat and his team have done to set up this to try to be a safe environment as possible. Now, again, a lot of it could be students uh doing things outside of the events, bringing it into the event. And then obviously contact tracing is contact tracing, as we witnessed in the high school. You know, with with, um, you know, twenty-one teachers or whoever getting it. You, of course. If if someone on the swim and dive team brings it in and they're all practicing together based on Oakland County Guidelines for Health. You know, there's gonna be twenty, twenty-five people that are gonna be contact traced out. Doesn't necessarily mean, you know, I mean, I mean, that's, but it, but the event itself. What they're doing, and I I was at an event last night where the, you know, they had league championships, they had six feet of, you know, they they spent. Hours upon hours making sure that event was as safe as possible for the students. Trust me. It was, you know, I mean, I know just talking to people there last night, they spent hours upon hours making sure. You know, all these events are safe as possible. So again, that that's, you know, my personal opinion. And I think you guys all know how I'm gonna be voting shortly. Um, Howard, I I wait, no, Jennifer, Howard and Cynthia?
Yeah, I I just want to make a quick comment about breaking our own rules. I mean, i- i- in in normal. In a real life situation, right? You you would not set up a rule and then choose to break it, right? It erodes trust. Nobody likes that. We, and if we do that today, which I am in favor of. I I just want to say that we always knew this was a moving target. We always knew in August when we made a decision on metrics that we made that decision on the best available information. We had at the time. And we have information and better information now. So I I I just want to say an organization that is overly rigid um for um. It it can also erode trust and and to trust Darren's point, when you said it's not fair, um, not fair to who? I I I mean, I would argue that that taking students out of school is not fair in a much larger way. So, thank you.
Trustee Bank, hang out second, I think trustee Bank joined us. So just to make everyone know and then if if he wants to have a comment or or just kind of raise your hand trustee or just jump in. Um, Howard?
Okay, um, very definitely. If uh Mark Bank wants to make any comments, we should all defer to him. Um, all right, on the metrics, I mean, there are three. Three vari- three alternatives we have. Either we follow the metrics we have. And if we, and and you, uh, someone made the comment earlier, absolutely, there were some intangibles. That we had assumed in the in the metrics. We left some flexibility there. So we would need to, if we make this decision to um to keep schools open. We need Superintendent Watson to be very, very clear to us of why. Or or ourselves, why we would not be following the rules. And maybe that's allowable or or permissible, but we need to. All right, but we need to be very clear then of what it is that we're overriding them for. So that we know if, you know, in the week or two or three weeks, in terms of whether that situation is still continuing. So we can follow the metrics. We can change the metrics or we can override the metrics. I have no problem, and I'm hearing some trepidation in some people that we can't change the the metrics now. We can't. You know, we set us, we created a set of rules, we have to follow them. They're not in stone. They're they can be changed. You know, we have ten weeks more of information. So I'm thinking even possibly even having three votes. One vote is on athletics and co-curriculars. And I totally agree with um Secretary Ephros that if we vote to not do. Sports and co-curriculars are nowhere near like education. Education is someone's life work, you know, K through twelve and going into college in their their professional life. Co-curriculars, you know, except for people possibly going into professional sports is an enhancement. It is not the reason why you're going to school and why we are here. We are not here for co-curriculars and and football and 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 water polo. We are here to teach kids. There is no way that we with a straight face can say we would allow sports but close schools. That's ridiculous. Um, so what I'm thinking is three votes. One is co-curricular and sports. Second is, do we change the metrics? Now, at this point, I don't think we know what we change the metrics to. And we would need to defer that to to Leonard and the superintendent to get back to us on Monday. You know, if i- i- in terms of what the new metrics would look like, that would permit us to keep schools open. Um, so, you know, that that's a really, you know, you know, so we we would kick the can down the road for twenty-four hours. Basically, between Friday and Monday to allow us to have metrics so that would, that we could then approve, which then would allow us to keep schools open. Uh, and then the third vote is um for today, you know, if if we decide not to change the metrics. Then we would go to the third vote and we would vote on uh opening or or keeping schools open or closed. So three votes, sports and co-curriculars. Do we want to change metrics to something? And then have a meeting on Monday with whatever the new metrics are. And if we decide not to change metrics, then have a vote on the keeping schools open or closed.
Thanks, Howard. Uh Cynthia? Cynthia?
Mark wanted to say something first?
Oh, Mark, yeah, Mark, did you want to say something, Mark?
He's gone, I think.
No, he's there, I see him.
He's here. Cynthia wanted to comment, maybe, you know, and then he could, you know, we can go to Mark after each person.
He might, no, he's not frozen, okay.
Okay. Well, I guess, I believe that we communicated and people made choices for their families based on one set of metrics. And so, I hear, I hear my colleagues speaking about, yes, that was a determination that was made on information that we knew back on August 20th, but.
Can you hear me?
Now we hear you, Mark.
You can hear me? Okay, because I have, I'm having a problem with the audio, audio end. Can you hear me? If somebody can give me a thumbs, all right, I see Jennifer give me a thumbs up, she can hear me.
I think he's still having audio problems. Cynthia, well, you know, if you want to continue your statement.
I just believe that our superintendent is trying to make decisions for our entire organization based on information our board has given him to operate with, and trying to keep our students, our staff, and our community safe. And I think it is appropriate for us to carefully determine, and yes, it is up to us, and he's, will do what we ask him to do. But I really believe right now that what is happening with the disease right now is way exceeding what it was doing back in, you know, in May. And we're not in the same state in our, in Michigan, in terms of the decline in cases. Now we are in a rapid spread, and we need to be part of the solution, not continuing to be part of the problem. And I think that it's important for us to consider that.
Thanks, Cynthia. Lisa, unless Mark got his audio background, for the long delay. Lisa, you can, you can go.
All right. I, I just want to say again, I don't have a problem looking at the metrics that we've chosen, because a lot has changed, and we know a lot more than we know since August. But I don't think we can do it in the middle of, like Cynthia said, people have made choices and relied on things based on promises that we made and we put out there. If there's an overreaching concern for public safety or short staffing, you know, things happen that cause us to have executive orders, that cause us to have to look outside of our own metrics. But it's not fair to the community, it's not fair to administration and to our teachers to expect them, you know, to just have absolutely no parameters to rely upon based on decisions we make about keeping schools open or closed. I think all of the points that the governor made yesterday and that Jennifer alluded to today warrant us having a discussion soon, but the numbers right now are so high, we don't, and quite frankly, we haven't had school with numbers this high before. So we really don't know if there's a correlation between school spread and hospital capacity and death. It's right now, but this is really very recent. Some school districts in the state opened within the last week, some aren't still open. So we only have enough time to be able to make that claim yet. If it turns out that that's the case, and we talk about it, and we talk about what more appropriate metrics we're going to be using, I think that would be fine. I just don't think, it's just way too soon for me to even have that discussion. And way too soon to expect administration to come up with a whole nother set of metrics that we're prepared to vote on. Yeah, one day, soon, hopefully, but I just don't want, you know, I don't want to make Bloomfield the experimentation. Anyway, second thing I wanted to say is, I think if we're having at least two votes, then I'm just going to put the motion out there so we can discuss it. I move that the Board of Education include athletics and co-curricular activities in the list of things that will be temporarily suspended because of the rise in COVID numbers and the placement in the red zone from our own metrics.
A second motion?
Well, we need to amend the agenda and make a motion, so we'll do that in a second. But I do have, just again, another comment about just focusing now, you know, I know I've talked about safety, but now focusing on the education, you know, and I'm focused on whether it's K through eight or K through 12, when we're looking at students with special needs and IEPs, and those students that, as great a job as our teachers do, synchronous learning and/or asynchronous at home, it just, again, for some students, and it's just the online method is just, you know, it's just not working. And they're not, and they're, you know, we can go through the social emotional aspect of isolation, not being in school with peers and the teachers that they love. But again, K through 12 for a lot of our students, or some of our students, or whatever that population is, the online is just setting them back, it just doesn't work. For some it does, and I applaud that it, you know, that it's working for some, the Bloomfield Virtual, and our teachers are doing a marvelous job, but for some, and especially those with special needs, you can go into, whether it's autistic students, students with IEPs, it's just not working. And again, that's another factor why, you know, whether it's looking at K through five, that morning, getting that core instruction from the teachers live, you know, with the additional support that people are getting, it's just so, it's just so imperative, and it's setting kids back, you know, so far, for those that it just doesn't work. You know, I'll just, you know, make that comment as well.
The point of order, though, yeah, point of order. We have a motion and a second, we have to, we have to act on that.
Yeah. And another point of order, there's no need to amend the agenda in order to make a motion. That can be done at any time during a meeting. It was, there's a motion, there's a second, so now the discussion's on that motion.
Point of information, please. It seems the discussion thus far has been a lump discussion of all co-curriculars. But I'd like to acknowledge that there's a difference between co-curriculars that involve heavy breathing and close proximity to a DECA meeting where the kids are sitting six feet apart and wearing masks. So I don't, I don't agree with having a single vote on all the co-curriculars.
But I can reword the motion, but I think we, my motion would be for all face-to-face co-curriculars. Because again, if we're prioritizing DECA meetings or any co-curricular ahead of, like Paul said, special education, elementary, then I have a problem with the priorities of that.
I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion. All right, amendment to the motion, I don't have the exact wording of what Lisa said originally, but that the determiner, to try to take what Jennifer said, that the determination of which co-curriculars and which sports would be at the discretion of the superintendent, and let him make the determination. So, the reason for this amendment is, it allows the superintendent to pick and choose in terms of whether it's all co-curriculars and athletics, or some of them, and let the administration and the athletic director and Charlie really figure out, you know, separate the wheat from the chaff.
That's not the motion.
I, that, I understand that, that's an amendment.
And I do not want to amend that.
Well, you can, all right, fine, it's an amendment. Do I have a second? If no second, then it drops. Okay.
Cynthia, you got a comment?
Yeah, I actually would like to hear what our superintendent thinks about that discussion.
Thanks, Cynthia. Pat?
President Colton, can someone repeat it? My what, I meant, who is going in now?
That's okay, Pat, a motion has been made about co-curricular and athletics. And I think the question is, before we vote on stopping co-curricular and athletics, what is, what is your thoughts on the matter? Because this was not the recommendation that you put forth for today's meeting.
Right, the reason it wasn't as part of today's meeting, a couple of different things. One, we know that the metrics say we should look at pausing in-person instruction, right? But for co-curriculars and for athletics, for the reason it wasn't on there is because the instruction's still taking place. And then looking at our students who have post-secondary goals and things they want to be involved in. So if you're a student that is thinking, I really want to be involved in forensics because I want to go pre-law, I want major communication, I want to go into performance, you know, getting that scholarship may involve being involved in forensics. If you're thinking, I really want to be an engineer when I grow up, you know, and you're participating in robotics, when you apply to schools like U of M, they're looking to see how well-rounded you are. If you're looking to go to Boston U, you know, being in robotics can give you that scholarship. There's no great answer. What we're trying to do is provide all of our students in nine through 12 with the most well-rounded, full education we can for their college application in the time of COVID, to give them the opportunities that they may need necessary.
You're on mute, Paul.
So Pat, based on, we have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, what is your recommendation to the board for co-curriculars and athletics?
Our recommendation is that they would continue in grades nine through 12 as part of the student's educational development plan.
Thanks, Pat. We have a motion, we had a second, any more discussion? Lisa?
Excuse me, you know, I appreciate, and want to say as well, I value co-curriculars and athletics. They've been really valuable to my own kids, and I know that they're an integral part of education, but we're suspending the education part of the education. So in terms of having a well-rounded education plan, that's not well-rounded in terms of post-high school aspirations. I mean, there's not a college in this country that's going to question why they couldn't participate in a sport or in activity because they were in quarantine. There's whole states in quarantine that haven't even started this year. They missed not only, you know, the entire football season, but all the instructional. There's kids who haven't been able to take an SAT or an ACT in entire states. So, you know, there aren't colleges out there that won't understand and won't forgive not being able to participate this year because of the circumstances. So, you know, again, for me, it just comes back to priorities. So, you know, if we're short-staffed, and if we're spacing, and if this numbers are out of control, and we're closing elementary and middle school, this, to me, this is a no-brainer. I don't even understand this discussion so much.
Howard?
What we're talking about is having the co-curriculars going to virtual, not canceling them, 100%. And what, all the examples that Superintendent Watson gave were related to co-curriculars. I will grant you that if we were, you know, in Texas, and we had a lot of people, a lot of kids going on to college football and professional football, or, you know, professional sports, or basketball, professional basketball, that might be one thing. But we're talking about forensics, we're talking about drama, we're talking about modeling United Nations, where all these things possibly can be done on a virtual world, it's just humans talking to humans, you can do that, you know, through Zoom. So this is, this is trying to keep people distant and not perpetuate the disease. It isn't telling them you can't do all these co-curriculars, it's just you got to use the computer to do them.
Yeah, Howard, I don't think it's, yes, some you can, but, you know, if, again, some of the things, if I look at the fall reflecting back, again, safe environment, you know, where there was Barry Boggett in Shakespeare in Love, excellent event, I think you were there, you watched it, you know, she pulled it off, Alan Posna pulled off 110 marching band, you know, in the fall, those students obviously couldn't do that virtually. And again, it's not, you know, it's making sure that the coaches and everyone does it in a safe environment as much as possible, and whether or not students are bringing it in versus, you know, they're not being safe in that environment.
But that was a month ago, Paul, we were not in the red zone. We did not have the disease increasing like a ski slope going up, or going up a mountain like it is right now. It's a different world 30 days ago.
Cynthia, I sure end up, well, Mark, I'm sorry, Mark, Mark has a question.
Can you hear me now? Okay. First of all, I apologize for not being available earlier. I received the notice yesterday of this emergency meeting, and then I spoke to Paul last night, who read me the single motion that was before the board for today. And as I understood it, it had to do with following the recommendation because of where we were to take all classes virtual and not be in the buildings at this time. And one of the things that I specifically asked, or was concerned about, because I had something that I could not get out of today, which I've now had to cancel, because I've been told there was scope creep, as one might call it, that there have been additional motions added to the agenda at this point. And I seem to recall we had a problem with that a few weeks ago. So if somebody could tell me exactly what is the motion that is currently on the floor so that I can understand it precisely, because what I understand, it's not the motion that was circulated to be voted on this morning.
Yeah, Mark, just, so the only motion, Mark, that's on the agenda is, the motion is, I move the Board of Education pause in-person instruction, shifting from hybrid to distance learning effective Monday, November 9th, for at least 21 days in orange. That's the motion. That's the motion that, the only motion that was on the agenda today.
And what is the motion that's currently being voted on?
That's the only motion that's currently being voted on.
No, Paul!
No, there's another motion on the table, Paul. Lisa just made a motion, relate athletics and co-curriculars. We will get to, we will get to the other motion in a minute, but we have to talk about this first. I mean, it's perfectly legitimate to add motions.
I'm just saying, the emotion, my point was, the motion coming into the meeting on the agenda before we convened at 9:30 was that motion, Mark.
Right. Mark's question is, what motion are we talking about right now?
We're talking about right now a motion to cancel all co-curricular and athletics.
All face-to-face co-curriculars and athletics.
All face-to-face, I have been written, you know, written down the motion, all face-to-face athletics and co-curriculars, I'm assuming effective the same date, Monday, November 9th, for at least, I mean, I don't know what the motion reads out. And it was second, and we're in discussion phase. Jennifer?
Just a point of, I don't know what it is, order or information, I would prefer to have a vote on athletics and co-curriculars after we vote on the main agenda item, because for me, the one influences the other. So, I would just. to have a vote on athletics and co-curriculars after we vote on the main agenda item because for me, the one influences the other. So I would just prefer to do it that way.
That makes sense to me also.
Cynthia?
Actually, I think the motion is on the floor and it's been second and we're in discussion. We have to vote on that motion before we would change it. If somebody wants to make another motion to amend that, that's their prerogative. But I believe that when we set our metrics back in August, it wasn't for something separate for co-curriculars and athletics than it was for our academic program. They weren't two sets of metrics that we were telling our community we're doing. I think it's hard to justify to our larger community and much as I know love, respect, and recognize how heartbreaking it is to suspend the kind of activities that we know kids greatly grow from their experience. But to the extent that we were able to do virtual to, for at least some of these activities, and kids can continue to be in touch with their focus and coaches can make recommendations of training and so on that they can do. I know that there are some things that cannot be anything like what they should be in person. And it's heartbreaking. I do not discount the value of those activities in any way, shape, or form. But it makes absolutely no sense to me that we would be using a different set of parameters and making our decision. Either we're making one decision one way or one decision the other way. I don't, it doesn't make sense to me to separate them.
Excuse me. I have to leave to go to another meeting, but I'll rejoin you as soon as I can.
Okay. So we have a motion second. Any more discussion about the motion second? Lisa?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of my colleagues have said that it would be helpful to vote on the recommendation of the superintendent first. It doesn't make any difference to me if we switch the order. So if it does to others, then I'm fine. And I can make a motion to delay, to delay the motion I made until after the vote on whether, the vote on what we're doing with K-28.
I think the motion is you'll move the motion to 4B under Board Business.
Okay, I don't have the adjustment in front of me. All right.
4B, that's fine. We can have it. Is there any more, well, any more discussion on that? We could have more discussion.
Well, we need to have a second on my motion.
What's your, what's your motion exactly? Is it to table the extracurricular motion and go back to the first one?
Is that helpful to you and Jennifer, Mark? You said it was. So that's fine. I don't have a, okay, then that is my motion. But I'm making a motion to table the motion about athletics and co-curricular until after the vote on K-28.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Secretary Effros does not have to make a motion to table it. She can just withdraw the motion. We go back to the original motion and then she, after the original motion that was on the agenda is talked through, then we can add an additional motion if she would so choose.
You're right, Howard. Okay, I'll do that. I'll withdraw it and then remove as soon as we're done with the motion on the agenda.
Okay. I'm gonna, right now, because we'll have time under 4A to have more discussion. Dave, you want to put a public comment? Is there anyone who has joined the meeting?
No, we do not have anyone to join to speak at this moment, but I will share the screen. Give me a second.
Okay. All right, we'll read public comment. Howard, trustee, Howard Barron, just keep time of three minutes. I'm trying to think if I have the rules, but I'll just, I'll just go read public comments since no one's joined. Thank you for reading the letter of your emergency. School board meeting scheduled for tomorrow. In my opinion, the urgency and disruption of our students creates a greater emotional risk than actually contacting COVID. There may be a high number of COVID incidents recently reported. Yet, the severity had been lessened, especially with our younger population. The detrimental effects of social isolation stoning fear and creating such a difficult learning environment is very harmful to our students and their well-being, should be examined thoroughly before making such a rash decision. We currently participated in parent-teacher conferences and have found that the two days of in-school learning have increased our son's participation, has created a better learning aptitude, and his positive attitude is refreshing, especially compared to last spring. I urge you to please consider allowing students to remain in school or at least consider allowing IA to determine a route separate from Bloomfield School District so they can stay in sync with other IA campuses to maintain their excellent curriculum. Based on the limited to no cases that have been seen in our, I don't know if that was that. All right. Based on the limited to no cases that have been seen in our school district, we should not be considering reverting back to remote. We now have data and evidence that wasn't available in August and can see how schools, especially our schools, are not spreading the virus. We are following all the CDC's recommendations and is working. In-person learning has been essential for my kindergarten and one of the safest places for him during the time. Conan has not had any cases. Please consider the data and evidence now available and the lack of transmission in school and continue to evaluate and quarantine individuals in schools as needed. But please do not send the entire district remote. Also, we should continue to evolve as we learn more and more to reconsider insurance in 21 days in R and metric before considering going back to school. Thank you. I'm writing in advance to my three children in Bloomfield, in Bloomfield Schools. My son is in private school and they are still attending face-to-face. I beg the board to allow hybrid to continue. Yes, I do understand we're increasing cases, but not in school transmission. What will happen is by switching to remote, kids will have more pods, more playdates, and you will see a rise in transmission and greater risk. That will happen if the schools are closed. Please, I beg you to realize this. Please look at the data, even your S schools open. We are not in a shutdown. Schools are still out. I beg of the board to put education first and it can be safely done as it's been for the last month. Thank you for your support. Mr. Watson and Board Members, before making a vote this morning to eliminate in-person learning, in-person learning, please consider the gravity of your decision and the inputs you are basing your decision upon. Regarding the inputs, I would like to echo the comments of others that question the wisdom of using countywide cases and positively matrix as viewed through the Harvard model for returning to pandemic resilient learning as our primary measure of whether we should conduct in-person learning. The OCHD toolkit for K through 12 schools lists many factors to guide the decision for school campuses to conduct personal learning. The very first factor is our continually evolving scientific understanding of COVID-19. The Harvard model document was published July 19th. The most recent update to the website includes two opinions, editorials from July 20th. Even worse, the MI Safe Schools Return to School roadmap was published on June 30th. The district decision to follow these guidelines was made August 8th. All these dates had the following in common. Nowhere in America has students actually attended school in person for months on end. The Harvard model and MI Safe School Plan was necessary when we knew so little, but these guidelines are no longer applicable and the failure of those bodies to update them is irresponsible and negligent. Mountains of data had poured into globally showed, in globally showing that in-person schooling can be deducted safely and outbreaks migrated, mitigated. I ask that the body, that this body used the latest available science to guide our decisions and not outdated plans and roadmaps that no longer apply. Please continue to follow our own example of success in-person learning as well as the model surrounding public and private districts. I am posting because I care about my children, I'm posting because I care about my child's education. I believe we need the board to kick off these, to kick off these studies because right now the board is making decisions without sufficient information. There were zero COVID cases at Conan Elementary and my child is about to be disenfranchised from receiving in-person learning education like many other private schools such as Detroit Country Day and Brother Ice. Boards and directors, Superintendent to conduct and publish the following studies and bring back the findings to the board. Studies, the best way to quantify the COVID-19 risk of the Bloomfield Hills District. Study to include analysis of COVID tests, confirmed COVID cases and COVID deaths by age group, class grade, township, county by state. Study findings to help inform the metrics required to return to full in-day personal learning. Findings to be published for the Bloomfield Hills community. Two, study the methods and protocols for all Oakland County public school districts and private schools have returned in person. Studies, study findings to help inform the methods and protocols required for Bloomfield Hills School District to return to full day in-person learning. Findings to be published for the Bloomfield Hills community. Study the best way to provide hybrid parents consistent same-day special study to look review the variety of implementation across the Bloomfield Hills School District. Study findings, provide recommendations for consistent same-time-a-day hybrid remote learning special schedule. Findings to be published for the Bloomfield Hills community. Study the quantity of in-person learning hours of Oakland County public school districts and private schools. Analysis to include all Oakland County public and private schools who have returned half-day in person. Study finds provide a recommendation for minimum hours per week of synchronous in-person learning for the Bloomfield Hills School District to provide world-class education. Findings to be published for the Bloomfield Hills community. Proposed measures, all future changes to the way the COVID cases are measured to require board approval. Dear Board Members and Administration, I'm writing today in response to the administration's recommendation to revert to online learning due to the metrics entering red. I completely understand the metrics were a necessary tool to guide to return to school in the absence of clear guidelines and evidence on school transmission data back in August. I think it is a mistake to continually relying on these metrics to guide school decisions going forward. We now have a month of evidence of our own schools as well as a growing body of evidence from reputable scientists that schools are not the source of community spread, yet the damage done to children by keeping them closes real and readily measurable. There are numerous sources I could send to support a move away from metrics to guide school in opening, closing decisions. But I will leave you with one that is just updated yesterday from the doctor's, the policy lab of Children's Hospital, Philadelphia. Two key quotes, we have intentionally moved beyond the absolution of case incidence of test positivity thresholds that although were helpful for knowing when, how schools to start school in late summer at a time when school outbreaks were insufficient to guide decision-making are no longer the most pressing questions for school leaders. Evidence of length in school transmission, i.e. viral transmission between and among students and teachers while at school should drive decisions to revert to online learning. Thank you for considering the latest scientific evidence and guidance when evaluating the administration's recommendation, recommendation today's board meeting. The metrics, the metrics the board set in August for in-person instruction need to be reevaluated. There is no scientific evidence to prove that our K-28 students should not remain face-to-face. We are not seeing the spread in this age group that was feared in August. There is plenty of studies from around the nation, around the world to support this. The seven people on the board are making the call for students to go remote. Many of the local districts are choosing to remain open. Neither, neither the state of Michigan or Oakland County are mandating that we shut down. Please excuse the Tony, but what makes you more qualified than health professionals in our state or county to make this decision? You cannot let fear alone guard your vote. You have to follow the science. The metrics set in place three months ago are already outdated. Please consider opening the discussion again and rethinking sending our students home for months. It is the wrong call. My name is Robert, Robin, and I have three children, BHSD1 at Wade Elementary, one in BHMS, and one in BHHS. I want to first thank you for your working tirelessly for our children, staff, and community. I know that you're dealing with difficult decisions daily. Last night I opened my email and my heart sank, not because we were going remote again, but because I will have to watch my child slack back down the hill. I tirelessly push him up. While my high school and son in middle school are bummed about going back to remote, they will be fine. They are going to sit, get their work done, and during the day with little difficulty. My third grader is not the same. In the spring, I had to watch my son slip behind and remove to remote. All the work that we were putting during second grade was washing away. The routines, the structure, the ability to sit and write is typical peers. The joy and compelling and assignment along with his peers. In the fall, I wrote to you expressing my concerns regarding development and his ability to keep up with his grade level instruction while being remote. I'm so happy to be able to have him attend school again in September. My third grader has an IP and has been able to attend school half the day per regular instruction, and the other half day received his special support. In the past six weeks since we have been back, I have seen him make huge improvements in school. He is happy, he's eager to complete the work. Finally, we are starting to see success again at school. The gap was starting to close again. In the past six weeks of hybrid learning in elementary, we have had six total cases of COVID over the BHSD. Our elementary and special ed students need to be in person. The data shows that the elementary population are least likely to get COVID. Schools are not what is spreading the virus. The data shows that as well. While we are seeking cases, we are seeking cases in schools. We're not seeing a spread of the virus. This is due to spacing of students, the cleaning and the masks. I beg you today when the board is making a decision about schools, please consider keeping elementary and special ed in school for the hybrid model. I appreciate considerations. Warm regards. I understand that we need to move, I understand that we need to move back to remote learning, so I'll not comment on that decision. However, the board and our schools need to find a way to keep our children engaged in school more than two hours per day while everything is remote. I'm starting to wonder how kids spend the day in school. My youngest can get his work done in under two hours. Try as I may, my other life responsibilities, don't allow me to sit with him hours a day and try to keep him things I know he might normally be doing at school. I'm not trained as a teacher, so I really don't know. I appreciate the challenges of working remotely. I have to lead a team at work remotely as well. I know they're adults, but this is a huge change. Please consider how we consider collectively and ensure that our kids feeling that learning at school is important and that they are important. Right now, I do think they feel everything like us. Thank you. I appreciate the difficult decision that the Board of Education has to make in facing the accelerating and spread of a virus to which there is yet no vaccine. North system plays for rapid same-day PCR testing that is district-wide. Building base free, accessible, and accurate. But, but could the board clarify whether or not extracurricular series and school sports would be postponed or hold or held remotely? It would be confusing to have remote instruction, but in-person after-school activities, whatever they may be. The kind of confusion might, show community doubt and process that the district had voted to enact. Has Oakland County determined the source of spread of COVID-19 among school-aged students? Is spread tied to student staff presence in school buildings during instruction or is tied to sports or after-school or non-school activities? If this issue's source of spread in the district's efforts to contain or limit this source of spread, could this be clarified today? It would be extremely helpful. Please do not do this to our children. I realize that there are metrics that the board has decided to use and hesitate to change. But there is more information now. Just because we have been in school for a few weeks does not mean we shouldn't change the approach. As the science and the risk of the virus evolved, it should, then should, then so should our approach. Studies have shown that the kids do not transmit in schools and fatality rates are low. This is during more harm and good for kids. I urge people to read local pediatric, Dr. Lisa Klein's public comments to the Board of Education last meeting. The mental health crisis for kids has surpassed COVID infection. This will affect them emotionally and academically for years to come. The kids are safe. Teachers are safe for distance protocols and PPA. Other schools like Lake Orion, Oxford, and Offal have committed to having in-person schools five days a week for those families that choose. Schools in Europe are open and considered essential. I urge the board to please use the latest science data and reason to keep school open for the future of our children and preserve the quality of Bloomfield Hills schools. My daughter is a student in the Wing Lake Development Center, and Wing Lake is not like other schools in Bloomfield Hills Schools. It provides services for some of the most physically impaired students in Oakland County. Services our children rely on to communicate, move, and function in their day-to-day lives. As the board navigates keeping students safe during the incredibly difficult times, please consider using different metrics at Wing Lake. The services our school provides, physical therapy, speech therapy, and occupational therapy cannot truly be replicated virtually. They just can't. For children with visual issues or speech issues, it's nearly impossible. The Wing Lake staff has done an incredible job creating an online curriculum, but it's not the same for meeting in person. We, we have not had a, I don't know where that went. I'll read this one. To the Board of Ed and Superintendent Pat, okay. We have not had a COVID case yet at Wing Lake since we returned in-person learning in a hybrid format late September. Please don't take away our in-person services now. It will be determined if the school once again shifts to all virtual learning. Again, Wing Lake student bodies are unlike the rest of the entire Bloomfield School District. And while all students will be affected by this pandemic, special needs students have been affected much, much more. Our students rely on these services. Please don't take them away again. To the Board of Ed and Superintendent Pat Watson, where did that one go? To the Board of Ed and Superintendent Pat Watson, thank you for working tirelessly during this difficult time. We now know that we did in August 6th. Schools are not the source of COVID outbreaks. This has been demonstrated by the other school districts throughout the country and private schools, both locally and nationally. They have been open to face-to-face instruction for months now. We have two second graders at Conan that have not, there have not been one case, and yet we can continue hybrid. They are devastated. Consistency is key with elementary students, yet they are now forced to learn in a different format every few weeks. If schools were the reasons for an increase in cases, I would support in virtual learning, but that isn't the case. We aren't seeing one case in classrooms turn into multiple classmates contracting COVID. Education experts have all stressed the need for students, especially elementary age, to be in school. Closing schools indefinitely is not the answer. Our kids deserve better. Thank you. Hello, I have an autistic son and a child with an IP in the fifth grade. It is not possible for me to help my older children with an autistic child who needs watching 24 hours for safety reasons. I'm simply unable to sit my kids and help them with school. They need help. They need teaching and I'm not a teacher. Sitting in front of a desk at home with a million distractions is a horrible situation for learning. I take, I understand the fear of this virus. Those who are scared should stay home. That is their right. Those of who are okay with sending our kids to school shouldn't be taken away. They're right to do so. Dear Board of Ed, please really take in these comments and hear the deep concerns from a very large number of parents. Our schools are not the problem. Our children are not causing spread. Our children desperately need quality in-person education. A fully virtual education is not going to work for my child and many others. They need to be in school environment and with their teachers. They need to be able to raise their hand, ask questions. They need to be able to see what their teacher is displaying. I am not debating the data. I am however saying that closing schools do more harm to our children than good for our community. People can go and sit down at restaurants, go grocery shopping, go to movies, and so much more than our children need to attend school. Education is essential, quality education. Read the studies, please. Children are not the problem. Children should be kept in school. Thank you. In August, the school district was debating plans for reopening schools. Bloomfield decided to use the Harvard Global Health Institute model developed in July, three months after COVID started in the US. Now we're venting the Redress Global and contemplate closing schools and moving to distant learning. Our resilience at the old model ignores what we have learned since Our resilience at the old model ignores what we have learned since then. Our schools have opened up with the hybrid models since September with great success and no school spread or outbreaks. Other schools have been and will continue to fully open in person with no widespread school outbreaks. The hybrid model rely on what was developed by Dr. Jai. This week in education week, he said, "There is no doubt in my mind that schools need to be bolder than they're being." There's a large mental health cost to children, but districts that are being too cautious are doing enormous harm to children, families and their communities. The idea that schools should be first, that casually before casinos, bars or restaurants, in my mind defies logic. We have lived the COVID nightmare for eight months. We persist and learn a lot in these long eight months. Don't rely on a risk model developed in July as we sit here in November. As the board deciding on policy, you need to weigh the uncertain risk of COVID versus certain impact on our children's education development. The Oakland County Health Department is not recommending that schools close, so why should the Board of Education force it? There was an overreach of the board. Your position is not to make health decisions for our community. It is to fight for education for our students. Tomorrow we could easily be in Orange and now you have upended the community, hurt our children mentally and educationally. For what? The purpose of going virtual is to stop the spread in our community. One of the unintended consequences of cancel school is for families like mine with four children who need to rely on my parents for childcare and I spend nine to three assisting my five and seven-year-olds on the computer. Canceling, my father has health issues and would be one of the very people compromised by the disease, but we have no choice. Who's going to watch my toddlers while I homeschool my elementary kids? The very problem you're trying to mitigate with closing schools is actually going to create more spread and potential death. Not to mention, we now need to socialize our children on our own, so that means more playdates, part-time, etc. School board shop is promoting education. Please leave the health decisions to health departments. Good morning. I'm writing out of grave concern, good morning. I'm writing out of grave concern of the potential in the closure of schools. School is not a choice. School is a right. School is not a want. School is a need. I understand the need for metrics and having some sort of basis for when we are in colored zone, but when the metrics of the Board of Ed is not, is following were laid out and voted upon in August. It is now November. We've successfully been in school for approximately seven weeks with zero school-related outbreaks throughout the entire district. There are in fact some buildings that have seen zero cases. School is safe. It has been proven with our own sample poll in BHSD that the school buildings are not where students, adults are contracting the virus. Not to mention the large amount of scientific data collected by students, doctors and other professionals that have shown the schools are not the problem. Back in the spring, the entire world shut down. No one was going anywhere and everyone was locked out inside their homes. There is no longer the case. People in the communities are going about their daily lives a bit with common sense caution. Shutting down school, shutting down the school system, the entire community isn't also shutting down, doesn't go any, doesn't do anyone any good. In fact, it is harmful for our children and our families. I think everyone listening to the world would agree. So the schools are shut down. Okay, well, the public libraries are closed. None of the local gyms are closed. You can still go bowling. You can still go to the movie. You can still go to a restaurant. Everyone is sending their kids to all of these after-school activities because of them are still taking place. Private schools are still in session. I can go on and on. What good does it to closing schools when the rest of our community is still living their lives? I would argue that closing schools actually accelerate community spread versus leaving schools open. You can possibly think that 5,500 approximate students are going to stay inside their houses like we did in spring. Absolutely not. Keeping the school buildings open is a controlled environment where children are masked and spaced out. Closing schools and letting everyone run wild is creating more community spread. Listen to the updated scientific evidence. Look at our own school community and really see that schools are not the problem and should not be the ones closing down. If you choose to close the school, you have it wrong. You will be thus creating a bigger problem and worsening the virus spread throughout the community. As an engineer, I based my decision on logical, useful, proven data. I do not see this happening with the decision you are making today. I have a daughter in kindergarten and I'm looking at the data that shows one in 4,000 people in this country have tested positive, either has or did have the virus for a single data point. As you know, you see the data fluctuate greatly daily and I see no correlation of data between logic that based on the number of positive cases, which also include retests of the same person and no cases within the schools that closing the schools to in-person learning is a way to protect our students and families. Our kids are great and in class separated with masks all day. They all have the same protocols we use in public. If I can go to the bowling alley or a restaurant and have no mask while eating, why can't my child get an education? Show me the data that says our kids are at risk in spreading this in school. Show me the data that says will directly impact the spread of coronavirus and I get on board. Until the data is shown, there is an ignorant move on the act of trying to be perceived as safe while in fact is not helping keep anyone safe. That's the only negatively impacting development if I show that I can get on board with the decision if you show me the data until the point you and very closely attend the action. We should, we should not need to wait until three weeks until the numbers go down. Just like any data analysis, we should be using poor, we are using proper analysis such as rolling averages and trends in determining actions. Running on data like that have elected to be shown, lack of understanding and should be rediscovered immediately. We are hurting our kids to think long and hard about what we're redoing because it has very long impacts on several different aspects of development. The Board of Education have the authority, the Board of Education have the autonomy to make decisions for the district to rely on data specifics for our geographic area, the Oakland County, the data for Oakland County is nowhere near the statewide. It does not have to increase in cases much. The health of our children, mental and physical, have to be accounted for. We can't control, as we have demonstrated in the last six weeks, that the children comply and wear masks and wash hands. The transmission within schools is not prevailing. For example, Conan Elementary and Blumentots, Conan, did not have any cases during the entire time the schools are open. Schools can contain and they can stay safe like we're open in Europe to maintain the health of not only children, but the entire society. If the government keeps restaurants, gyms, non-essential business open, how can we clear conscience to close down the schools? I urge the board to allow in-person learning to continue. Please consider that it's safer for the kids to be in school rather for them to be gathering outside of school with their peers. Why are sports and extracurricular activities still allowed, but in-person education is not? Why is the first thing to be closed down is face-to-face learning? Our children will continue to fall behind both academically and emotionally. I strongly recommend dealing with COVID-19 at a building level instead of a district level. The outbreaks can be controlled by closing buildings for two weeks. Why is this not considered? If the high school does not have sufficient staffing, then this should be dealt with by high school. Why should elementary and middle school students be closed down when staffing is not an issue in their buildings? Both Closton District and Oxford District have sent letters to their communities stating that they would continue to provide in-person learning. Our children should be allowed the same opportunity. I am very disappointed that the virtual faction of the district has been able to influence any decision regard to in-person schooling. It is very clear that they have. If they have not chosen the in-person path, they should have, they should have ability to stay in it whatever whatsoever. In addition, I believe it's time for boards begin considering the opinion of the parents that have chosen in-person as part of the decision-making process. While I feel our biggest obstacle is the way the virus is being handled, extreme quarantine and testing rules that only seem to be getting worse over time and that this is what makes in-person schooling so difficult. I do not believe that the district should be giving up. In addition to the fact that school spreads are unlikely and that keeping children home is much more likely increase the community spread, having them out and, having them out and about during the day rather than in school, wearing a mask and following the guidelines the district has laid out. The school district's job is to educate. First, find a way to get these students in school and keep them there by, rather than digging for data that's proven that wouldn't be there. This is a school district. It's not a health department. Your absolute top priority is probably the best possible education for these students. Europe seems to have done that. I would like to see the board spending its time researching how and why they have chosen to close the entire economies again, yet leave schools open. I am sure this includes the data you need and how it is not spreading in schools as well as the social, emotional wellbeing for all of it that somehow began forgotten in all of this. I cannot even fathom the long-term damage we are inflicting on an entire generation of youth, the future of our country. People have choices and they will choose private schools more and more because they will make it happen. Please start making this about the students as it should be and put them first. Thank you. The district's inability and failure to staff substitute teachers and bus drivers is an administrative failure and needs to be addressed. The administrative failure is due to the current district policies and half-day strategy which is put in place. I can never expect people to sign up for part-time work that isn't paid the same level of COVID relief unemployment. Pay bus drivers, substitute teachers for Wednesdays at a rate which entitles them to work. Should we go to distance learning? I would like to ask the district to reconsider the start time for BHA students to follow the standards, which go to be the late start time of 8:55. I'd like to know why we cannot keep our schools open. A lot of European countries are entering lockdown 2.0. They're all keeping their schools open. There are numerous studies and reports that schools are not the super spreaders and the detrimental effects of our children from not attending school in person. What are the European countries doing that we can't? What do they know that we don't? COVID is not spreading in schools, nope, nope. COVID is not spreading in schools. Kids being home and attending activities, playdates, outings are catching it, but the schools have been open six weeks and we have had less than 30 student cases. Multiple countries in the EU have closed and yet they are keeping schools open. They know what their priorities are. Your actions are not offering in-person full-time are driving many families to private schools. You have lost many already and will lose more next year. Many of these families cannot afford to go elsewhere. They came to BHA to get a fabulous public education, but that is not happening this year and they have lost faith. Think about what is going on to affect Bloomfield Hills. Howard Barron series of questions were put tirelessly and made it clear that the board does not have safety as a priority over appeasing the part of the parent community who is outraged. Jennifer Cook made a recommendation not based on scientific facts. Why is the board continually to meet virtual if they feel safe to meet in person? Not just the morning, but all recent meetings. If the transmission of cases of the schools have been almost nonexistent, how is it having children home the right answer? They need to be with their kids in a safe environment and from what I have seen, schools are at play. There are known outbreaks on sports scenes, but they are not, but they are not being shut down. Why is that? Having a child on the computer for all day for class and having them to do homework at night on the computer created screen burnout earlier this year. The two days in a week in the classrooms made all the difference. I think the children's mental health and wellbeing are at stake if they move back to remote learning. Dear Board of Ed and Pat, I will stop by saying, I will stop by saying we are beyond grateful for the opportunity to be back in school. Although not full-time, hybrid was a dream compared to no in-person. As I composed this email, my heart is broken for the students who have so much hope in being back in school considering it looks like school. I'm truly struggling with how we are going to break news to them. Once again, we are a newer family to the district last night for our first-year at Conan and by January 2019, we felt that we have always been part of the community. It's what you make it, if we are so happy to have them. When I worked on the school bond that we passed, our hopes for that the future seemed so bright, full of excitement. That feeling has faded and slowly become dimmer as we continue to let our children down one blow after another. We have three children, fourth, second, a preschooler with speech and OT services at Blumentots. When I spoke to Pat, and I know he's a promoter of keeping our kids in school, I shared that we felt like we are choosing between our kids' physical and mental health. For our families, it was 100% the right choice to be back in school, especially after our pediatric office and AAP agreed at school is essential. If bars, restaurants, gyms and public gatherings, venues are able to stay open, how can we justify schools being closed? This has never been safer. I'm not here to talk about, talk to you about following science, but I am urging and begging you to please reconsider these metrics you have been following, especially knowing what we have now that we have been back in school. We know the virus is not a school spreader. Our teachers and students want to be in school. We are so incredibly lucky to have the staff that we have. I cannot emphasize enough how grateful we are for our teachers. They are doing a job that is nothing they signed up for. They're doing with love, compassion and care. I hope you know how much we adore them. Please, please be the leaders we moved here for. Most importantly, for our children's future mental health. Are we asking how our students, are we asking how our students feel and really understand how this impacts them? My special needs seventh grader is having the best year of academia despite much chaos, many different schedules and change on a daily basis. Then I want today to be the last day in person. The change, this change shared via email overnight last night, will be back to virtual has been an emotional bomb for our family. We no longer have our day-to-day normalcy that is compounding to our kids as we should be scared of this looming monster that is COVID is installing fear and making them feel less empowered to take care of themselves. More of that, not knowing when we go back to return, asking students to bring everything home again is a true black cloud of doom hanging over us because now we have to wonder if we are allowed to go back. Please consider asking students what they want and need. Our amazing teachers are helping them grow great kids into better adults and their voices should be heard and considered. Thank you. I would strongly encourage and suggest the board to reconsider remaining a hybrid person considering assessing virtual needs on a school-by-school basis. If I feel strongly as a mother of special needs child at Wing Lake and two elementary school students that one is already below grade and all, we should think about each school assessing individually on the COVID situation, whether they would be virtual. The schools in most cases are safer than virtual and I feel strongly that the staff are trustworthy and working so hard individually on the COVID situation, whether, are working so hard to stick to protocol and minimize risk so we can stay hybrid in person. Please consider the bare minimum keeping Wing Lake open and assess based on just the school itself for the sake of our kids and families. Dealing with the situation suffered greatly due to virtual not being effective to those special needs childrens. BHHS staff caused the close of school because 25 teachers congregated in the teacher's lounge and are all in quarantine. They made a horrible decision affecting our children being in school. Absolutely ridiculous and unacceptable. Two, we shouldn't be following data and charts from months ago when we had much science and guidance that tells us schools should remain open. So give parents a choice and allow students to be in school. The board shop is to be flexible, review the signs and now change the metrics. Health experts are saying not to close. What more information do you need? We are able to provide six feet distance mask growing, so close the teacher's lounge and please keep schools open. Thank you. Mr. Watson indicated that according to the other superintendents he's contacted, the spread of COVID in the schools is minimal, but the need of students being in school seems more important. The lack of staff seems to be greater issue for the superintendent in COVID outbreaks. Maybe the board could offer solutions to the understanding while keeping schools open. The red, yellow, green chart needs to be thrown out of the window. It is outdated. We have learned so much since it was created in August. Education is number one. Keep the schools open. All the data supports that. My seventh grade is walking out of school right now at 10:50. He sent me a text. I am so sad. In-person school is basically over. These children are suffering. You know, please help them. School is safe. The health department is saying it is okay to stay in school. Thank you.
Paul, we have a number of more public comments. We also have someone who has joined the meeting and I cannot see my screen. Corey, if, I believe Phil might be the first one up to address the board. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and update the public comment. We'll come back to it when I'm ready, Paul.
Okay, so we have someone here, someone that's live, Dave. Who joined the meeting?
That is correct. Phil, I think Phil was first. I've got to get caught up here.
Hi, thank you. Yes, thank you. Yes, my name is Phil La Liberty. I'm the president of the Bloomfield Hills Education Association. I'm here today to first make sure that we're all aware that my membership has gone above and beyond what anybody expected of them or should expect of them this year. We were one of the first districts to go back face-to-face K-12 and throughout all of that, I've assured my membership that if things got too bad with COVID, that we would follow the August guidelines. The mere fact that we are questioning those guidelines today after being, after following them for two months has and will have ramifications that will last into the future in terms of trust, right? My members trust that this board will keep their safety and wellness in mind and that to do anything other than causing a pause to in-person learning now that we're in the red would be simply unconscionable. It would be simply unconscionable. We want nothing more than face-to-face, full-time education for these children. This is what we want. This is the job that we signed up for. However, the safety and wellness of my membership should be considered as a priority in these decision-making. It's quite shocking what I'm seeing. Also quickly, I'd like to address a comment that was previously made. Many teachers were quarantined at the high school, not due to any action of their own. We work in work rooms. There is no teacher's lounge. We have co-teaching and to question that was extremely disheartening. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Paul, I still need a few minutes here to copy these public comments over. It's going to take me a few minutes, please.
That's fine. We could have discussion, you know, we're at board business, so I'm sure we may have more discussion. So we could, you know, obviously go through discussion after we make a motion and we.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Howard?
I would like to make a motion, please. I move the Board of Education directs the superintendent at his earliest convenience to provide the board any revision he can find of the Harvard study of pandemic resilient teaching and learning model.
Thanks, Howard. Do we have support? And I assume, Howard, would you want to move that to 4C?
Absolutely. And this is in consideration not only about what I said earlier in the meeting, but listening to all those public comments. We need to at least think about whether the model that we approved in August is still the current one, given a few months have passed by. So, that's my motion.
Do I have support? On mine. Howard, do you have a motion? I don't think you have support. On mine. Howard, do you have a motion? I don't think you have support.
Howard, can you restate the motion, please? I want to hear your wording again.
Sure. I move the Board of Education directs the superintendent at his earliest convenience to provide the board any revision he can find of the Harvard study of pandemic resilient teaching and learning model.
All right, sorry, is this allowed to ask a question? I'm a little confused. Are you saying you want the superintendent? Are, are you saying you want the superintendent to explore an updated Harvard model? Or you want the superintendent to explore any other metrics that are deemed sound?
Well, at this point, we have used the Harvard model. So I am, my motion is to see, to go on the Harvard website and see whether there is an update since the last time, since August 20th, when we adopted the model. But I would certainly be um, open to the consideration of the superintendent if there are other models out there that um, are better than the Harvard model. We, we went through that benchmarking process and found that Dr. Ja was an expert. But if the superintendent can find other models that are even better than any Harvard model, yeah, I'm open to that too. But I, at this point, the motion only says to update the Harvard model with another Harvard model, but I certainly wouldn't preclude the superintendent to give us a, you know, a non-Harvard model that really is better than what we have in Harvard.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have support?
Um, I, I don't love the wording, but I, I will, I support the intention of this motion that this board definitely, we, we, we have to revise our, our lens at looking at the disease effect on schools.
So do you, Jennifer, do you support Howard's motion?
I, I, I do support, yes.
Okay, so we have motion support. So that'd be moved to 4C. Um, Dave, before we start having.
Yeah, I can share the final comments.
Do you need some more time?
No, I'm ready to share the final comments.
Okay, put it up.
Ample evidence has already been supplied to the board showing the safe operation, safe operation and safety of our students during hybrid election. It is beyond debate and these metrics being used to deprive our children of critical face-to-face education are harmful, to say the least. As a physician, I am currently weighing risk benefit while I treat my patients. Oftentimes, these decisions are not clear, but decisions need to be made. And we take the, the best evidence and we have, we have. And when possible, we include the patient in the process and together we make the best decision. What this board is doing is completely ignoring the benefits of students in fear of risk that so far the data does not show are valid. What is valid is the harm that prolonged our virtual education is having. You are, you are in your, you are derelict in your duties to these students and our request that you are voting in favor of these metrics and discontinuing the face-to-face education is resigned effective immediately. We have a son in kindergarten in Way Elementary at beginning of the year and frankly, all summer long have weighed the measured risk reward of sending our child back to in-person learning. The reality is we made our decisions to send them back to in-person, fully understand the risk factors. For us, the overwhelming majority of way parents we speak to, our decisions have already been made and nothing has changed. The district has the opportunity to fully remote learning, which serves those parents, students, and teachers who are uncomfortable with in-person option. With the two cases of Way Elementary and minimal in our district elementary schools, we compel you and the board to not surrender to the pressure of the cancel culture. The situation not better our children who by all scientific measures and, and studies are at almost 0% risk. However, without socialization structure and a sturdy educational foundation, these children are in alarmingly high-rated depression or aggression with grave, long-term implications. We fully respect that, the fact that COVID-19 is real and for those with risk factors, it can be incredibly dangerous. That said, we as parents have all knowingly made the decision that is best for our young learners and we hope you and the school board will do the same. We must keep these schools open for our children. We cannot sit and wait for a vaccine that could never come. Board of Education trustees have multiple, have multiple public opportunities to express their concerns regarding data and metrics. While, while you've had the discussion, there are teachers who are, who are sending emails to parents indicating remote schedule. They are saying goodbye to the students. I'm very disappointed with the lack of communication. I want to see my children remain in hybrid learning, but I don't trust any of you or the process at this point. Please also note that children need educators, not babysitters. It makes zero sense to provide babysitting options so kids can learn virtually. Just provide them an education. While my house, while my household is disappointed that the school must close its doors for a while, we understand and support the decision. Our school component has not had any COVID cases reported, yet we've all watched every day the cases mounting around our district. How close to the fire do we need to get before we get burned? We can still feel the heat. It may be an inconvenient and not ideal situation, but everyone's health and safety is paramount. I do not wait to see until a Conan Club is added to the COVID list or any BHS student or staff member before we close the doors. Please continue to keep our kids safe. I asked the parents, I asked the parents stop comparing our decision to go, I asked the parents to compare, stop our decision to go in-person, virtual to the choice of private schools relying on tuition for their student body. Of course, they open, they have, they have, can fund their operations and pay their employees. Name and name rings public school with similar demographics that have in-person learning. Several have yet to open or have gone back to full virtual recently. This is the safest option for our students. Of course, it is not ideal for learning, but Oakland County is in a dangerous spike that would have been irresponsible to expose our students and families to. Remember, they have already been in two dozen COVID cases amongst our students during a time deemed safe. As a teach, as a teacher at the high school, I can attest that my classes are far more effective when we are fully remote rather than hybrid. My experience will be doing a better service into our community following the metrics and deciding, making the structure of the board set forth. On Tuesday, the board decided to keep the metrics listed on the website because the decision was already made. Now it appears that the opposite logic is being implied to this situation today. I would implore you to set aside the caution to keep the safety of our stakeholders in mind. As a teacher in the high school, I implore you to consider all stakeholders in your decision. To agree upon metrics, but there is a reason to move to this point now doesn't make sense. In my classes over the past several weeks in hybrid, in comparison to district learning, I've seen learning and engagement to be far superior than remote. I, I support reexamining the metrics in the future and the hybrid model that needs to be time and discussion that can be done and adhering to the safety for everyone. Good morning, Board. I thought I would, good morning, Board. I thought I would weigh in with student perspective here. Yes, online is tough for me and I prefer face-to-face, but uh, we have now, we have now entered the red zone cases for rising among. To talk about the issues about people not getting the same while help, uh, the same help, while if we keep the hybrid model, we are affecting the students' learning as well. Some of my teachers are struggling to teach two classes of Zoom and have the attention split between the Zoom, between the two. Zoom works great. There is a, there is a, there is, there is a to type in the chat, raise your hand when you need help. And to conclude, when I've been face-to-face, I've noticed a nu, a numbers drop. The first day in class, we had 70 kids, now we have four. I would like to take the time to say how much I appreciate the school I've done in the school year so far. I'm very impressed on how things went in beginning, fully virtual and how hybrid has gone. Although my son enjoys his half-days alone, finding his teacher during the, an excellent job engagement virtually on Wednesdays. My concern is not only for the students, these numbers, but the fact that our children do not live in a bubble. The virus can be brought home with them and the enormous continue to rise. There's only amount of time for it starts affecting families. I firmly believe that at this point, you need to stick to the metrics you presented at the beginning of the year, so the parents made the decisions based on. Perhaps revisit your metrics and update them, but you cannot move the goalposts at the same time we're getting there. Thank you to the board and administration for having difficult, necessary discussions. A longtime employee of Bloomfield Hill School District finds difficult to believe that we're still debating the virus is dangerous in schools. What we've called snow days, even if the potential of safety of students or staff is at risk. And yet we have to know, and yet we have a known rise in COVID cases on the horizon. The ethical moral argument to stay in school, knowing the potential is greater harm to health is concerning to me. Please consider your choice, Kathleen, think of all stakeholders, including those who believe that the virus is dangerous. Thank you.
All right, Dave, I assume that's it?
Yeah, I've got a couple more still coming in. So if you want to, as a board, keep letting public comment come in or close that, it's up to you. But I'll keep adding them. Give me a couple more minutes.
Um, all right, we'll go to 4A. Can I have a motion? And then we'll go through.
Paul, there's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. I'd like to speak to the motion, please.
Could you repeat it, please? Could you repeat it?
Can I, can I say something first, uh, before we talk about the motion? Going back and forth and adding public comment is really confusing to me and hard to follow what motions are on the table and what aren't. I want to make sure everyone's heard. So can we push the rest of public comment till the very end and listen to the rest of public comment then? I don't want to miss any, but at the same time, uh, going back and forth, i- it's just too hard to follow and um, very disorganized.
All right, so, so right now we're going to, you know, so Howard, your motion and second would be under 4C. So we have 4A, um, right now that I'm asking for motion. 4A is what's on the agenda.
No, Mr. Mr. Colon, please. We have a motion on the floor and it has been seconded. You can't go back, you can't, you know, that's, it's, on the floor is a motion. Now, if we want to finish some public comment, I have no problem with doing that.
Howard, you have a motion to amend the agenda, so 4A still comes before 4C.
No, no, we have not, we don't have to amend the agenda, Mr. Uh, Mr. Bank. We have a motion on the floor and it has been seconded. That is parliamentary procedure. Now, if we want to finish up public comment, that is fine. But we don't have to, the agenda does not have to be amended just because motions are made. We just, we talked about that 20 minutes ago.
Howard, do you have comments? Do we want to have discussion about your motion that's been seconded? Is that what you want to talk? Do you have comments?
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, the first thing is, how do you want to handle public comment? Do you want to do it now or do you want to wait till later?
We will wait till later. We will, we will finish our three, our three things now that we will vote on and then I will read public comment later.
Very good.
So Dave can have time to add it.
So what you're saying is, so what you're saying, at this point, you're saying public comment is going to be after we vote on all the emotions that we have to do?
Correct.
Okay, that's your call. Um, all right, so I would like to speak to the motion that I have on the floor. Um, as I said earlier in the meeting.
Say it first, please repeat.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jackie. I apologize, yeah. I move the board directs the superintendent at his earliest convenience to provide the board any revision he can find of the Harvard Study of Pandemic Resilient Teaching and Learning Model. All right?
That's your motion. That was seconded by, that was seconded by Jennifer Cook.
Correct. So let me speak to, okay, let me speak to the motion first because I made the motion. So I said earlier in the meeting that we needed to look at the model that we are using from two and a half months ago. Pat then, so, and, and the public comment has just reinforced that, that we don't, we're kind of sitting here in a little bit of ignorance. We don't know exactly whether the Harvard model has been changed or not. Um, so we need Pat and Leonard to go and tell us if there are any changes that have occurred in the intervening timeframe. Now, Pat alluded to that there hadn't been any changes. I would like to actually see the website or have Pat confirm that with Leonard and really present to us what changes, if any, in writing have actually occurred. Um, earlier in the meeting, I also said, well, we, we, let's reconvene on Monday. Quite frankly, Leonard could be doing that right now as we're in the meeting and just go on the website and research it. And if any, you know, I, I, I changed my motion from Monday to at its earliest convenience, and that could be like right now. So I just want to make sure that what we're using from August is the latest and greatest model, not data, but the model. Now, as I was thinking about what I was going to say here, I found a quote by John Maynard Keynes, which he said, quote, "When the facts change, I change my mind. What do you do, sir?" We need to be able to use the most current facts that we have in terms of what is the right direction we should be going in. And that's all I'm asking for right now is if, if Dr. Ja, who is no longer at Harvard, he's now at Brown University, but if the, the great minds of public health are saying that the metrics we're using are correct, fine. But if we are using outdated metrics, we need to, um, we need to keep current with the science that is out there. Thank you.
Okay, since, since Howard, and, and since we didn't move yours to 4C and like we did with Lisa's motion, and we have yours in a second. Any more discussion on Howard's motion?
Yes.
Lisa? Lisa, then Mark?
Mark, go ahead.
The metrics that we use, the data that we evaluate is something that we should be looking at every single day. And that's part of the administration's task in all of this. This is their job. This is what they do. Um, I imagine if there had been some change in that metric, we would have been informed about it uh, previously. Um, I'd be surprised i- if we hadn't been. Where, where I stand on this, and I'm just going to speak to all three things that are out there at the moment, now having caught up on this conversation completely and uh, listened very carefully to the public comment that came in. There are a lot of very, very good points here. Um, we set, it, it, I said this previously, this isn't like, you know, water boils at 100 degrees centigrade and therefore, you know, there's a bright, fine line here. There's a lot of things that need to go into this. But we did set an expectation, we set a metric, and it is something that, as Mr. La Liberty said, we should follow. However, we should also be reevaluating whether that metric is still the proper metric to use, whether there's other things we should be considering, whether we should be weighting our considerations differently. So Howard, I think your motion is frankly too narrow in, in what it is. What I overall support is an overall uh, theme for this morning is, yes, based on what we have done in the past, what we have said in the past, what we know, and the information that's available to us and, and, yeah, I'd love to be able to keep the kids in school. But I, I think the proper decision right now is to shut down and go virtual. However, I think we should be reassessing the metrics that we use, the information we look at and understanding, and maybe have a study session as early as Monday or Tuesday, uh, to see what the administration has been looking at. Have they changed their thoughts on anything? Is there any new information out there that would be available to them? Which is kind of a broader view of Howard's motion. I don't know that Howard's motion is really necessary. And then, and then just to uh, weigh in on a conversation that was taking place when I did join the meeting, it seems a long time ago. But on the extracurriculars, I don't know that we have enough information on that. And I'd like to see us get, uh, have the administration come to us with a recommendation as soon as possibly Monday and reconvene Monday, whether first thing in the morning or in the evening to address that question separately once admin has had an opportunity to at least weigh in on it. Because I'm not hearing a recommendation from the administration and maybe, and I appreciate why because it wasn't on the agenda uh, for this morning. So Howard, relative to your motion, um.
Would you, would you like to make an amendment to it? I'm, I'm perfectly open to that.
No, I, I'm going to vote no on your specific motion. Um, but I, I do think it, it's because we need to be broader in the sense of this, and we'll speak to that later in the conversation. But I think as presented, the motion is just way too narrow.
Well, I'm, Mark, make an amendment, make it broader. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, again, I'm going to vote no on this motion. And then, after we get through this, we can discuss what are, I'd like to hear from Pat at, at the end, you know, relative to how we're, how we are going to, on an ongoing basis, reassess um, new information that becomes available, and new studies that become available, new metrics that become available, and how this evolves on, whether it's weekly, monthly, or whatever, so we can keep the community informed as to what we're looking at and how, you know, our decisions are being weighted. And I'm not saying being made, but being weighted. And I mean very carefully, very careful in how I say that. So.
Thanks, Mark.
Um, I, I really don't have much to add to that. Um, I appreciate the intent of Howard's motion as well. And I do think um, we as a board should have a discussion with Pat and input from administration, but um, not, uh, not in favor of tasking them with a specific, um, you know, in a specific motion with coming up with an assessment of the Harvard threshold. I, I would like to have an overall discussion on metrics and thresholds. So I do think at some point that would be worthwhile. Some point soon.
I'm sorry, Lisa. Cynthia?
I do think that um, it's important for our administration to make missions to us if they think there is a need to change the metrics. Um, we are in the middle of a semester right now. We have staff members who made professional choices on how they wanted to be teaching this semester. We have families that made choices how they were, were going to uh, have their children be taught this semester based on the metrics that we established. Um, I think it's important for the administration to continually look at all the criteria. Um, I think one thing that's very different about what's happening. Um, I think one thing that's very different about what's happening in the United States as opposed to nations that are, um, keeping schools open while they've shut down the rest of their society, is, is that the fact is they have shut down the restaurants. They all love the other things that are going on and made it a national priority for schools to be open. We're, we're trying to have both and. And, um, right now, it's not working very well in, in our community and across the country, but in Michigan and, uh, in our area as well. And so we do have a, a big responsibility. Um, and it's, it's not something we take lightly. Clearly, our staff has done a, a excellent job in trying to control the spread within our school community. But we can't deny that there is continual spread and it is very intense and more like the spread that was back in the spring, early on. And people are going to be inside. It may be a beautiful day today, but we know just a few days ago, we had a snowy, ugly, windy day. Um, those are, more of those are shortly ahead. People are going to be inside and it will be, um, hard to control it within our community. And we have a responsibility. I think we need to listen to our teaching staff about their concerns. And we are, have a, we have a recommendation from our administration that we are having this big conversation about today because of their concern too.
Uh, Jack, I know Howard, but Jackie now, we'll go to Jackie and then you, Howard. Jackie?
Yeah, I, I think that, um, I think building upon, uh, what Mark and Cynthia mentioned is that I'm pretty sure that, that, um, with this, with the public comment today, as well as with our discussion today, that, that, um, Pat would most likely, you know, uh, Pat will be, I believe, understand the consensus and be in consensus with us that he would want to go back and look at these things in order to be able to provide us with, um, greater depth of, uh, of the current state. I mean, he's keeping track of these things. Um, so I, I don't necessarily think that we need to very specifically tell him, go and do this specific thing, um, as a directive, as a vote. Um, I, I think that we're going to be looking for, just as before, uh, when things changed and we started to have a conversation, he went back and went from five day and provided us was with a hybrid option. We didn't necessarily tell him, do this specific thing, right? Uh, he understood from the guidance, from our guidance, and from his own understanding where he wanted to move, that that would be the next step for him to do. So I think that, I, I, I understand, and I think that, um, Howard was right on and Jennifer with, yeah, that's a good idea to do that. But I do agree with Mark that it's just not broad enough. And I, and I also just think that knowing that it's a consensus of the board and from public comment, that this is something that we want him to do, that, you know, he understands the consensus of this discussion is to do that. And I don't think we necessarily have to vote on, vote this specific, um, uh, motion forward in order for him to go back and really use his own judgment on what is the next step that he needs to provide us.
Thanks, Jackie. Howard, do you have a comment or a question?
Sure. Um, I greatly appreciate what Cynthia and Mark and Jackie said, and I agree with you. My only caveat is this. Um, if we don't, if we do this directive, then we don't vote on 4A, which is going to, you know, cancel in-person school or the, the, the hybrid model. Because if we then, if we vote this down and then vote in favor of 4A, we've done two things. Number one, we've totally changed the structure of school, you know, starting on Monday. And we are putting in a 21-day timeline. So any reevaluation that Pat does, um, will not be effective until basically after Thanksgiving. So what I'm trying to do is accelerate that timing and saying if we haven't, if a new model exists, look, and, and I'm, I'm hoping, again, I don't direct Leonard, but I'm hoping that Leonard, while this meeting is going on, is research, is going on the Harvard website, because I don't know where to look. And if there is a new model, we can adopt it or, or hear it right now. But if we don't, if we say yes in the, you know, in the future or the, you know, soon, please reevaluate it, Pat, or do it on your own, because we expect you to do that. That's great. But if we then vote on 4A right now, we're putting in motion something that's, you know, going to be tearing everything up in our school district for the next three weeks, possibly unnecessarily if we have a new model.
I'd really like to hear what Pat has to say about that. Maybe I missed it, but Pat, could you comment on, on perhaps a way that you think we should go forward?
Really, it depends on what the board is asking. You know, as far as trustee bank, as far as I can tell, with the Harvard model, where it's currently updated, I'm looking at the website right now. You know, the red is still, you know, 25 cases per 100,000 people. It says tipping point, stay-at-home orders necessary. If to ask is to look at the different models out there, whether it's the CDC model, whether it's a different county model, whether it's, um, Oakland County Health Department model, or models internationally. We, we can, we can present those as well. Depends on what the board is looking for.
So, so, and this, now, that's, that's good information, Pat. So what you're saying is, right now, the Harvard model, because you kind of alluded to it in passing about an hour and a half ago, but you've actually looked at the, the website and the model still is the 25%, 10% red, you know, 10 to 20% and 5 to 10% orange. I mean, that, the, the, the cut points you're saying on the Harvard model have not changed.
As best I can tell, I'm looking at the website right now.
Very good.
COVID risk level green, less than one case per 100,000 people on tractor containment, monitor with viral testing and contact tracing program. COVID risk level yellow, one to nine cases per 100,000 people. Community spread, rigorous tests and trace programs advised. COVID risk level orange, 10 to 24 cases per 100,000 people. Accelerated spread, stay-at-home orders and/or rigorous test and tracing programs advised. COVID risk level red, 25-plus cases per 100,000 people. Tipping point, stay-at-home orders necessary. As best I can tell, and I'm reading directly from the website.
So, yeah, my thinking is.
As well, and then sent me the link.
Yeah, my, my thinking is this. We, in August, adopted the Harvard model. Now, it didn't have to be the Harvard model at that point in time, meaning if the Harvard model evolved, we adopted the Harvard model. But what you're saying is the Harvard model has basically been static and hasn't changed in the last, uh, two and a half months. And that's very good information. I, I'm perfectly well, I, and, you know, to what we said earlier with, uh, with Mr. Cullen, um, in terms of, I don't want to override the experts. And if the experts through Harvard are saying that business, you know, that the model is still the same, and therefore we are in the red, and the red says we go virtual, then I'd say we go virtual. So, um, with that, if, with, I will, I will withdraw my, my, um, motion given the new information that Superintendent Watson just gave us. Thank you.
Okay, so that motion is withdrawn. Um, going back to, to now, going back to 4A. Can I get a motion for 4A, Board Business?
What, what do you want a motion for, Hal?
We have a mo, 4A, we have a motion, um, you know, that was on the original agenda. This is not your motion, Lisa, that, I need a motion for that, that we can vote on, on the Board Business.
All right, I'll do it. Um, I move that the Board of Education pause in-person instruction, shifting from hybrid to distance learning effective Monday, November 9th, 2020, for at least 21 days in orange.
Do we have support?
Support.
Discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make an amendment. Um, I would like to add, let's see, add the words. I move the Board of Education pause in-person instruction and, um, certain co-curricular and athletic programs at the discretion of the superintendent, comma, shifting from, and then, so just adding those, that parenthetical phrase in there, um, to allow the superintendent to make selective, because, all right. So I'd like to make that amendment. And I can explain it a little bit after it gets seconded, if it gets seconded.
We have support. Okay, we don't have support, Howard.
Okay, very good.
Okay. All right, so going back to the original motion, support by Cynthia. Do we have discussion?
I'd like to, yes.
Mark, and Mark, do you have something to say? Mark?
Uh, Howard has something, and then I'll speak after Howard.
Okay.
Okay.
Howard?
Um, yeah, the, the reason I brought that amendment up, and I'm, we'll, we'll see whether, you know, what I'm about to say changes anyone's mind. There seems to be a confusion amongst the, the, the governance organization here. Um, Lisa earlier said, well, of course, co-curriculars and sports are going to be, um, you know, are part and parcel with education, of course. So it's, it's obvious. And what Pat said is, no. Um, educate, you know, the, the Harvard model was purely education, classrooms, and that co-curriculars and, um, and sports are a totally separate category. So we just have a difference of, um, understanding and assumptions. So we need to get on, between ourselves and Pat, we need to get on the same page in terms of where do co-curriculars and sports fit into what we're about to consider on 4, on 4A? Are sports and co-curriculars included in 4A or not? I don't know, because there's confusion and ambiguity.
Yeah, I would like to under, yeah. Um, does this include, um, special education and preschool? And, and, and do you want that, and, and should it, Pat? Is that what you want it to be?
Yeah, so the, the, the motion, you know, the motion is to pause in-person instruction. Right? We're not, we're not saying we're canceling, we're pausing in-person instruction. And so that was the motion that was brought today. And, and we're here, based on the protocols that we established August 20th, and that were voted on by the Board of Education. And so that's what we're here doing.
Okay, and I, I just have a follow-up. So, um, because we talked a lot about special education before and our building, um, at Wing Lake, and also, I, I just wanted to clarify that, that, um, because we did bring them back, you know, preschool and special education was brought back, um, first. And so I guess if we, so we have a mandate for 21 days. But if you find that when you balance in any way, then we could, you could come back before the 21 days if you found there was any issues or anything like that. Like, do we have to all, I mean, we're voting to keep it out for 21 days, but what would be the alternative if we found there is a reason to, to, or maybe you come up with a way for even partially helping support some of our most, you know, needy students? Is there a way to do that? Or you don't think that's necessary? I'm a little concerned about that.
I can fully understand the concern. You know, right now, the metrics we improved in August said that if we get the red, we'd have a board meeting. At that board meeting, the vote would be decided on the board whether to pause in person. And we're not suspending instruction, to pause in person. And that would be for all students, you know, pre-K through 12. At which point, if we bump back down to orange for 21 consecutive days, we could consider going back to the next level, which would be the hybrid, which before we had extended dates. I feel fairly confident we wouldn't need to extend those dates out as long as we did before, because we've done it. We've been there. And the priority would be placed on bringing back our special education students and the younger students first.
Okay, thank you.
And just, just, just on that, Pat, and I know Mark has a question. So it's, you know, in getting to the motion, the motion is 21 days in orange. So just to clarify, if the next 17 days were orange, day 18, we were red, and it resets to another 21 days. Just to, just to, just to clarify.
Yeah, so it's a seven-day moving average. We need to be in both categories in orange. Yes.
Yeah, so it has to be orange for all 21 days. So if the seven-day moving average, 17 days was red, was orange, and then day 18, the seven-day moving average was red, it would reset to another 21 days, right? Just to, just to clarify for our community.
Correct.
That is fine. Mark?
Uh, there, there's so many different sub-conversations going on here. I, I think we need to stay focused and separate the issues. We have, there's a motion on the table to pause in-person instruction for a period of 21 days. Um, that doesn't mean that we're stopping education in the Olympia Hill schools. Education will go on online, um, as we did last year, as it's been updated, supplemented. Um, but we're prepared to be online. Um, relative to 21 days, we're, we should be constantly reassessing the data that's out there, the science that's out there, and looking at it. And if something comes up where there's new metrics available, new scientific studies available, the superintendent's going to come to us and say, there's new stuff out there, we should have a study session immediately, reconsider the metric, and, and that should be fluid. That, that's a fluid process here. Um, and that's, so it doesn't need a, a separate motion. It, it, or maybe, I don't think that needs a separate motion in and of itself. But if, you know, it's brought to our attention, um, you know, over the next few days, few weeks, whatever, that, uh, there's different things that we're not looking at that we should be looking at, or something has changed dramatically, um, then we'll take a look at it. And if we need to call another emergency session and the 21 days is longer or shorter, we'll do that, because we're going to do what's best for kids and what's best for this community. Um, relative to the, um, the, uh, amendment that was made that wasn't seconded a little while ago by Mr. Barron, um, that should probably be a separate motion, in my opinion, in relative to extracurriculars. So there is some, uh, guidance here. Um, what I'm hearing is that it is a separate, uh, issue from in-person instruction. And I, I think that is something that, you know, you, you need to look at on a, a sport-by-sport, you know, basis, or activity-by-activity basis. Does it occur only outdoors? Does it occur only indoors? And what is it? And I, that one, I am comfortable, uh, if somebody wants to make a motion or take Howard's amendment and put it in a separate motion to, uh, defer to the superintendent or to come back on, you know, Monday, Tuesday, and have a recommendation made to the board on that, uh, when administration's comfortable making a separate recommendation on that and going forward. But there's one single motion on the table right now. It's a very focused motion, but this board, you know, has the ability to be fluid. The administration has the ability to be fluid. We have the ability to be intelligent, continue to gather information, reassess things a- as they go forward. And, but the, the motion at least creates an expectation for the community. And I think that is important at this time, and that's why I will vote in favor of it.
Okay, um, Howard? Howard, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. Um, I totally agree with trustee bank. Uh, it makes perfect sense that we, uh, separate it. I tried to do it as an amendment, you know, doing it as a standalone motion works just fine. Um, I just want to, in addition, I want to clarify, the 21 days, you know, we're in red right now. So let's say we're in red for another month. Then it goes to orange, then the 21-day clock starts. And if we ever go back. clock starts, and if we ever go back to red, then the 21-day clock starts all over again. So we, you know, so we're not saying we're going to be, you know, in virtual for 21 days, you know, it could be, it's, it's a minimum of, put it this way, it's a minimum of 21 days, it could be a few months, it could be quite a while, I don't know, you know, we don't know how long, but the 21-day clock is a, is a minimum, certainly not a maximum.
All right, thanks, Howard. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, we've had a lot of discussions, so I'm going to call a vote. We'll start with Mark.
Yes.
Uh, no.
Jackie?
Yes.
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a no, motion passes, 5-2. We're on, Lisa, we're on your motion, and I forgot, did you have it written down? Can you, can you read your motion again?
Yeah, I did. All right, I, I, I withdrew it, I reworked it, so here it is in a more simple form. I moved that the Bloomfield Hills school, I've moved that the Bloomfield Hills School District, when remote, make extracurricular and co-curricular activities, oh, um, remote, sorry, let me reword this, when school is remote, extra and co-curricular activities can only be held remotely. Athletics can only be held remotely. When we are hybrid or face-to-face, athletics, co-curricular or extracurricular can be held face-to-face. All I'm saying is, what Howard said earlier, is to make it consistent. So sports, athletics, and co-curricular will follow the rest of the district when we're open, five days, co-curricular, sports, and athletics are open five days. When we're hybrid, I, I agree with Mark, we go case by case, and when we're all remote, then they can only, all of those activities and sports can only be all remote. So I guess the motion is that all athletics, co-curricular and extracurricular activities follow the rest of the district in terms of what we're doing instructionally.
Okay, do we have support? Okay, discussion? Anyone raise their hand?
Yeah.
Was it Jennifer?
Yeah, I, I have to say, I, I really am in favor of the spirit of this, but I'm just going to have to vote no, because I don't think you can put all co-curriculars in the same bucket, and certain co-curriculars have demonstrated that they can meet in person safely with no outbreaks, whereas other co-curriculars have demonstrated that they cannot meet together without outbreaks. So I am going to vote no, simply because I think it's punitive, and, and the single case to some groups, and the single case does not apply, but again, I think in general, it sends a horrendous message that we favor co-curriculars over academics. Thanks.
Jackie, then Howard?
I, I prefer the caveat that Howard had, where we leave it at the discretion of the superintendent. Personally, I think it's different if things are outside, and, and my understanding from the doctors in my family, that when you're outside wearing masks, and when you're inside wearing masks, it's, it's just a different, the, the, the ability to be infected is just different, and so I, I prefer the caveat that Norm, sorry, that Howard had, just that, to leave it at the discretion of the superintendent. I understand, I like the idea of it, and I, I understand why we want to do that, but I do believe that, that, I guess similar to what Jennifer said, is that, for one thing, when we're doing co-curriculars, we're not forcing anybody to do that, and, including teachers, you know, they are, they can be voluntary, and the students can be voluntary. And, and I do, to me, it's different if they're outside and what they're doing than if they're in a closed environment. So I just wanted to say I like Howard's caveat there.
May I make a suggestion, you make an amendment?
Or we could, or we could vote, or, or what we should do, we have a motion, a second, discussion, we'll vote Lisa's motion, and then if someone wants to make another motion, we can do that, so. Lisa? I'm sorry, Howard, did you have a comment for Lisa?
Yeah, related to what Jackie just said, what I said earlier, related to the discretion of the superintendent, I'd really, if it's, if it's okay with the board, Todd's on the line, and these people, at least the co-curricular people, I'll report to him, and I think the, the athletics report to either Tina or Kelly, I'd love to hear their thoughts in terms of, are we, you know, for co-curriculars and sport, you know, really, they're separate, co-curriculars, sports, is this one-size-fits-all that Lisa is proposing, is that too, too broad? Or is it something that we should try to differentiate between the different, the different types of co-curriculars, different types of sports? Todd, or someone else, if they'd like to respond?
I, I think that's something that we should have a study session on at the beginning of next week. I would support at this point, giving the superintendent absolute discretion over the activities on a one-by-one basis, based on he and his cabinet's review of things, similar to what Jackie said and what Howard said, rather than putting a blanket completely on it, I don't think, I hate to use the word fair or unfair, but I can't think of a better word, to put it, Todd and Mike Calgary immediately on the spot here, Howard.
Okay.
When this wasn't on the noticed agenda for today, I, I don't know that
Okay.
we're going to, I, I want them to be able to have time to do their best work and come to us, we want to reconvene on this issue next week, that's fine, but what I would, what I'm going to do would be to vote no on Lisa's motion, but as Paul suggested, have one of us make another motion to defer to the superintendent, and then have his staff come back and report to us what their thoughts are, and then from there, we can decide whether to leave it in his discretion, or whether we want to take some decisive action.
Sounds like a plan.
I like that.
Second, Cynthia, then Lisa.
I'd like Lisa to be able to speak to her motion if she wants to.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to point out that now, we have, for at least 21 days, canceled all hybrid and face-to-face instruction for special ed, for preschool, for K through 5, and we're having a discussion about keeping athletics and co-curriculars open. I, I, I want to make sure that this is what we all know is on the table and we're discussing, because I'm sort of flabbergasted, that's all.
I think, Lisa, this is my initial response, if I can, it, the in-person takes place 99.1% inside the building, and there's a difference between indoor and outdoors, as we've been hearing, and distancing and things like that. And it may be that you're, you're entirely correct, but what I want to know is from, and I don't think this is, this moment is the right time, and I think if we give Pat discretion over the next several days, and then we hear back from his cabinet as to whether there is a distinction, is not a distinction, we can make the most informed decision on this. So you may well be right on this, but I need more information, and again, this was not part of the agenda, it's an intelligent conversation to have, but we can be even more intelligent in our decision-making based on better data.
Thanks, Mark. Cynthia, sorry, do you have a comment?
I think it's a, an important conversation, I, I do, I, but I am very sympathetic to, to Lisa's commentary. I, I guess I want Pat to be able to tell us if he, you know, if he wants that discretion, but it just seems, it doesn't make sense to me that we are doing one thing for instruction and something completely different for, for some of these co-curriculars, but yet, maybe indoors and separate from outdoors. I think we vote on this motion, and then ask the administration to continue to examine that decision.
Okay, all right, we have a motion, we have a second, I'll call a vote on this. So in reverse order, Howard? Okay, Jennifer, well, Jennifer?
So like the other thing, I, I'm voting with our lived experience, like I said before, we have, we have lived experience that certain co-curriculars can function safely, and I am voting no, so that those can stay put. But for the co-curriculars that have not demonstrated that they, they cannot go on without spread, I am, I do believe that they should be suspended, and we are, the only difference in this vote is that we don't have predetermined metrics, but we need to follow our lived experience in both instances.
Okay, that's it, so that's a no. Jackie?
No.
Mark?
I disagree respectfully with Jennifer's logic, but my vote's no.
Okay, Cynthia?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a no, motion fails, 5-2. Do we have, before we go back to public comment, do we have anything else, any other motion, or?
Can I say something, or, because we, we kind of went, you know, we went around and around and up and down about metrics, and studying, and getting better ones, I just want to say that, you know, it took a good two to three weeks of a lot of research, of a lot of people, to go with what we decided on August 20th. So that was a total group effort, and it was great, and it is something we need to do again, and it may not be able to be done by Monday, but it absolutely has to be done. Mark, you spoke very eloquently about fluidity, and, and, you know, going with what we know, and so we, the, the information we know about COVID is different than we knew on August 20th, and to keep making decisions based on outdated information is stupid. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Cynthia?
We also need to respect our professional staff and understand that they can't just flip it on time.
Not flipping.
Thanks, Cynthia.
Enough, thank you.
I would like to make a motion.
Got Mark?
Relative to extracurricular activities, my motion is that we grant the superintendent the authority to decide in his, in his discretion, based on the information available to him, on an individual basis, whether to allow or to suspend in-person meetings of individual activities, and that we convene a study session in the next seven days, in which we can be presented additional data, have more discussion, and decide if something different than discretion, whether it's, yes, we're going to just allow it, or no, we're not going to allow it, or it's going to be his discretion on an individual basis. That's kind of wordy, I apologize, but I think everybody gets the gist of it. So in summary, it's to give him discretion, and that we convene a study session in, as soon as reasonably possible.
Second.
Got it. All right, we have support from Jennifer Cook. Any discussion? Lisa?
Okay, I, I just don't really understand, again, like trustee Barron's, this is superfluous, because wouldn't we always ask for discretion from the superintendent to do things like If an individual sport or co-curricular needs to shut down, I don't believe that the board has to vote piecemeal, sport by sport, co-curricular by co-curricular. So I, I guess I just don't see the, the need for a motion, seems redundant.
Howard, or Jennifer, Jennifer, then Howard?
Yeah, I, I want to say, sorry if I was a little agitated, acknowledging that the situation changes. I, I totally agree with Mark's statement that we have to, we have to be on this, and that we, I, I would encourage this board not to take anything that happened today as, as overtly rigid either. We have to continue to study and reassess while sticking to our mission of providing the best education possible. So I'm, I'm just here to say, we, we have to be flexible, and we should not be rigid. Thank you.
I just, like, I also agree, sorry. Yeah, I also agree, I think Mark spoke to it, and Jennifer spoke to it, and I am concerned especially about special education and what happened last time, so absolutely, I think we don't want to be rigid, we want to continue to study and encourage our superintendent and learning services team to study that, and so I'm agreeing with my colleagues.
Okay, so we have a motion, Howard?
Okay, two things. One is, this motion is, is not superfluous, on the co-curriculars and sports, is not superfluous, because there obviously was, you know, as, as the administration put together the agenda for us yesterday, for this morning, co-curriculars and, and sports were not really considered, and they, I'm assuming therefore said that they should be continuing 100%, and it sounds like the board is, is not feeling that way. So there, we need to get on the same page on this, and right now, it sounds like we and the administration are kind of, you know, not in sync, so we need to, to sync up on that. Sort of, a little bit off-topic, but kind of related to the previous motion, we need to take special consideration of special education. And even though we voted in foray to, to terminate all in-person instruction, I am hoping that the administration does have some leniency for special education, and does try to, especially with Wing Lake in particular, if not all special ed, because of IEPs and the difficulty of doing IEPs in a virtual world, that we, you know, not treat them 100% the way we do with the gen ed kids, with, over that, you know, with the 21 days and the whole deal. So I am hoping, and again, we, we didn't talk about it specifically when we just approved it 5-2, but I'm hoping the superintendent does have some consideration. I see Ms. Perone is on the, on the line here, that there is some understanding that special education is a special case and needs to be treated possibly differently, obviously with health concerns being paramount. Thank you.
All right, okay, we have, again, we have a motion, we have a second, we had discussion, I'm going to call.
Can, can Mark repeat the motion? I'm already lost, I can't remember it, and I hope that whenever, for whatever reason, whether we're, it's a pandemic or something else, whenever there's anything that the superintendent deems to be unsafe going on in any of our co, extra, or athletics, he would absolutely handle it, and if canceling it was a recommendation, he would do that. I mean, I would hope that that's just an unknown, and we can all, can all agree on that. I mean, it may not be a pandemic, but if something different's happening that's dangerous, that, that, that should always be, you know, under his discretion to do that. If there's something that's not safe, by all means, he's got discretion to, to stop that, whatever that, that activity.
To repeat the motion, as requested.
Mark, can you repeat the motion?
Yes. The motion is to grant the superintendent the authority to, in his discretion, permit or not permit extracurricular, extracurricular activities to go forward while we are not having in-person learning, and while we are not having in-person learning and to convene a study session sometime in the next seven to 14 days so that the board can discuss this in greater detail and perhaps have better data on which to make a decision. Period.
Just to realize that that was a change to the original motion. Original motion had seven days and now Mr. Bank said seven to 14 days. Which one is it, Mr. Bank?
Approximately seven days. I'll, I'll split the baby.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We have, all right, so we have, so we'll call a vote. Jennifer? Yes, Jackie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Lisa?
No, only because I, I think it's redundant.
Howard?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion passes, six one. Dave, can we go back to, hopefully it's not grown and, and you can stop public comment, obviously now. So whatever public comment you have in there, I'll read.
President Colin, can I say one thing real quick?
Yeah, of course, Pat.
Thank you. As far as extracurriculars, we can share the information that the Michigan High School Athletic Association has in this study session. We can share what the Oakland County Health Department has to say. But we're not medical experts. Right? So we can't say this is safe or this is unsafe. We don't, we don't have that background. All we can simply do is present what the safeguards are from the Health Department and the safeguards from the Michigan High School Athletic Association and present that. But we're not going to have a recommendation saying this one is safe, this one's not safe. We're not going to have a recommendation that says, well, if you get one case of COVID in your sport or extracurricular, we're shutting it down. We're not medical experts. I'm in no position to make that type of specific recommendation. Again, all we can do is say, here's what the Michigan High School Athletic Association has for expectations for safety. Here's what it will look like and our expectations for our coaching staff. For those involved in extracurriculars, here's what the Oakland County Health Department, here's what the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has to say as far as the recommendation. Present that to the board, then allow the board to have a discussion and determine what the board wishes at that point.
Your, your point's well, well taken, but I'll, I'll draw an analogy that I think you'll appreciate. While the Big Ten has permitted football to go forward, Barry Alvarez, the athletic director at Wisconsin, has deemed it not safe for his school to participate in football the last two weeks because of what's going on at, at that particular university within the Big Ten Conference. And while the MHSAA has allowed activities to go forward, you're, have the ability to look inside our community and see different things in different programs and say, in my best discretion, just like Barry Alvarez uses his, I don't think this activity should go forward this week or next week till the board can come back and say, now that we have more information, this is what we're gonna do. So.
So I can, thank you, trustee Bank. I can speak to that. Especially I've been following the Wisconsin situation closely. As you know, my daughter attends the University of Wisconsin. They're working directly with their community health partners. And the community health partners are providing that guidance. Barry Alvarez is not. So for a situation, for example, using an athletic situation where we know with winter sports, we keep talking about outdoor activities. Well, we're moving indoor, outside of skiing and snowboarding, right? We're moving indoors. So if there is a case with the girls' basketball team or, or boys' basketball team or wrestling or indoor activity where there is COVID positive case, we'd work directly, just like we're now with Oakland County Health Division, for them to say, you know what? Quarantine everyone. Actually quarantine half, but the other half in isolation. Actually, no, you, you can continue. We would work with them, the same way that the University of Wisconsin is working with their health department.
I think we're saying the same thing.
I think what, I, I think what Mr. Bank is saying is, or another way to phrase it is, the, the health departments will help us with the health rules. We then need to apply those rules to the individual organizations, whether it's co-curricular organizations or, or athletic organization, athletic sports, to determine, given those sets of rules, whether those individual groups can adhere to those rules or not adhere to those rules and still get their, their task accomplished. And that's something that the board doesn't want to do on its own. Obviously, that's something that Todd and the, and the, and Charlie, et cetera, needs to look at each group and say, okay, you know, what does it take for that group to function and how do these rules apply to that? And that's what we're asking for. We're not asking for you to make, you know, unilateral decisions for health, but use the health rules and apply to the specific situations of each organization.
So trustee Barron, that's what we're doing with the Oakland County Health Department or Division right now. When things come up, we contact them directly.
What we're saying is that's reactive. And that's fine. And what we're talking about is being proactive and looking at them ahead of time.
I think everybody's perhaps misunderstanding the point of the motion here. The, the motion was to give some sense of order for the next approximately seven days so things can go forward or not go forward in Pat's discretion. And then the board is gonna get together to determine based on all that information that Pat was talking about, whether we should adopt the, the rule that Lisa suggested, which may, we may determine to be prudent. We may determine that extracurriculars should be completely separate. But until we can do that, there needs to be a decision-making process. And for that, Pat, this motion is to give you that authority till the board can come back and give you more direction. That, that's all this is. And, and, and using the Barry Alvarez, you know, analogy, as you, you know, he ultimately made the call talking to this person, that person, the other, and you're free to do whatever. And what this motion says is, you know, we trust your judgment, we have faith in you and we will fully support whatever you think's appropriate till we can get back together and give you more direction on this. That's the, the best, you know, the legislative history of the motion.
Thank you, trustee Bank.
Mark, Lisa?
I just want to say I agree with Superintendent Watson. It, it's illogical because under that reasoning, why aren't we giving him the same discretion to say, Conan had no cases, we should just open Conan? Or this particular class had no cases. Pat, you have discretion to allow just this class to resume. It makes no sense.
Okay, um, all right, with, with that, I'm gonna go back to reading public comment. Dave, go ahead up.
Coming at you.
Okay. Okay. I want to thank Paul and Jennifer for your sincerity and common sense when using current data and science to move forward rather than using a motion of odd metrics to decide the future of our district. Thank you for being a rational voice to the innocent students who have no voice right now regarding the educational future. People will continue to leave the district if this unprecedented decision is based on emotion clear and outdated data. We know more and do have, and do have information on spreading in school and using outdated data is irresponsible. It should also be noted that the comments just shared by the president of the union sure seems like a threat. That is unconscionable, not using logic, science and data to update students. I have no idea whether, whether conspiracy about high school teachers congregated in the teacher's lounge. Play that the individual has no idea what they're talking about and is only seeking to place blame on the staff without any evidence. We don't have a teacher's lounge. It's sad to see such a disgusting lie make its way into public comment. We hear a lot about choice. Where is the teacher's choice? We don't have one. My parents are both immune compromising and I compromised and I'm put in a position where there is nothing I can do to quarantine myself, so I see them over the holidays. The virus is getting out of control. We are shattering records on a daily basis in the state of Michigan with case numbers. The numbers are not just increasing, they are accelerating. Let's put students first. How many times has a comment about safety being our top priority been made? Let's put the safety voice, close the schools for them. They already have been slipped in contact tracing resulting in teachers first hearing about their exposure to live viruses two to three days afterwards and not from the district, from Oakland Health Services. Instead, they find out through the student. Please for the safety of all of us, close the school based on the rules you choose to set. The emergency meeting, uh, the emergency meeting this morning is disgraceful. You agreed on metrics in August and made choices for our children and families based on those metrics. This is not the time to change those. You should be following the metrics that were agreed upon and presented to the committee in August. Schools should be put in the remote learning now, given the situation. After that, if you want to change the metrics to second semester, then so be it. But why? But now, while numbers are surging in this country, is it time to change the plan? Also, why are board members still meeting virtually? I don't know where that went. I'll read, I'll read.
There was more to that comment, I think.
I got it, I got it. Also, why are board members meeting virtually? If, if we're going to spend all morning arguing that safety meet in small groups of mass, why are you not doing that? We cannot question the metrics because we are tired of the virus. The board has a duty to stakeholders remain steadfast to science and data, not feelings. I urge you to think about the implications of staying in school when we are led. We need, we need for the metrics for reasons. We are safer at home. Feelings are not science. Please think about everyone involved. I'm disheartened by the anger around this, but I do understand that it's stressful time and scary and frustrating for parents and teachers. As a teacher at the high school, I do believe that remote learning at this point is safest. I only have three students in a few of my classes in person and 25 to 30 on Zoom. Families are deciding to keep their children at home more and more and the board is still meeting virtually. Clearly, there are concerns about the spread of the virus. Perhaps being in school seems safer. Walking into the school walls don't negate any outside exposure that students, family, staff may have come in contact with. The suggestion that teachers are congregating is also frustrating. Personally, I have not even gone into the collaboration room. I have not, I have not seen my colleagues in the building the ways I once did. I sit in the car and go outside whenever I can. The time is coming to end when the impeding, with, with the impending, impending winter season. My classroom is not being cleaned regularly. The floor is often still filthy. It makes me question whether or not deep cleaning is happening. Our three students are these, those are in bond and I'm beyond impressed with the measure they have taken to keep our kids safe. While there has been case here and there, there is no proof that it was contacted or spread at school. And the screening, I can say with a heavy heart, my kids learned almost nothing. Starting at a screen all day is one thing, but actually absorbing the information is far more difficult. Since going on half days, all my kids are thriving and happy. It just proves the value of in-person teaching. Please consider changing your thinking and rules in the best interest of the kids. To the school board, whoever is elected by the public, the public comments in terms of numbers by far endorse the following current health guidelines by using the data surrounding the non-transmission throughout schools. A metric set up by the board as a rough guideline several months ago should not be used as a starting point, but should always be judged relative to the meaningful data off to what we know today. Please don't ignore the public comments around following health guidelines and always fighting for the kids in school based on these guidelines. Not the other way around. It seems obvious that the public who elected to keep their kids in school want to continue based on the data of today and they're okay with the risks. Let's not override that decision without the Health Department or CDC telling us to do so. Thank you. I moved to Bloomfield Hill School District. I moved to Bloomfield Hill School District last year in order to have my kids what I thought was the best schools in the era. I have to say, I'm so disappointed with what I've experienced so far. PHS main objective provide the children the superior education. Give us the parents the options on how and how to have our children's learn. I fully support face-to-face school because for me and my family, that works best. At the same time, I'm not attacking those parents for virtual. I'm not arguing anyone else's decision. I'm just advocating for my choice. Let's start trying to prove to each other why, why one option is better than the other. Let's both, let's leave both options on the table and choose, family by family, student by student, which one suits our best needs. I urge you as the board to leave both options on the table. If the parents choose which option is best for their child. It astounds me that the school board totally disregards totally disregards the students while being. They continue to disregard the parent pleas and ignore the outspoken response to what we feel is in the best interest of their own kids. Their decisions seem to be based on fear and outdated information. Would the board consider vouchers? I, I would urge the board, I would, I would urge the board to consider multiple motions regarding in-person learning. Specifically, our young and special education learners have had different educational challenges from our high school students and therefore need to be separated. From my experience as a parent, I have a fifth grade student with a learning disability that is doing, doing great with high grade, but which viruses were not effective. In contrast, I know my seventh grader will be successful either on the model based on the excellent Bloomfield Hill staff. As a parent, I made a choice, fully understand the risk based on the learning model that will drive the success expected in Bloomfield Hills. Please allow our learners to need in-person the best opportunity for success. First, the parents who are demanding their voices be heard, keep schools open after getting the bigger picture. Voicing one's opinions are right and only are right. Parental opinions are not categorized board or school district directives. Second, the reason schools have a lower amount of COVID cases than other public environments is because of the excellent job teachers and those staff do to ensure the safety procedures are executed with fidelity and consistency. These precautions are not adhered to public environments. This is why COVID and why COVID is appearing within our buildings. Unless the governor does something about this variable, we cannot stop this part in the spread. Third, it is absolutely paramount. The committee remembers that this is a pandemic. There is not one person, one, one country or anything that's responsible for our society's current regards to COVID, although some people looking for a scapegoat. Simply, if there is a threat to the people or people who congregate within our buildings, our buildings, the responsibility thing to do is to honor the safety and do what we can do in order to alleviate the threat. It applies on snow days, armed intruders, COVID. Nobody wants educational halls, absolutely nobody. But this is a pandemic. We need to prioritize health and survival, our opinions, demands, blame. Virtual learning is the best option for education during a time when a highly contagious virus is sweeping across the globe. Finally, public comment has greatly influenced the conversations, emotions, today's board meeting and the fact that there was a motion to table the comments till after the vote was very, was very impressionable of the board. I wanted to give my take as a healthcare worker on the front lines who lived the pandemic. Schools are not the transmission vectors. Literature has demonstrated in time and time again, even though instances have occurred. You will be, you will not be in a safe, effective vaccine for the general public for some time. We do not solve the problem by addressing a sign note. We solve it by addressing the issue. You want to fix 80% of the problem, we tackle 80% of the problem, not the 5%. The measures the school have taken with half days, virtual learning, remote learning have been effective. They are wearing masks all day and are six feet apart. They are taking more and more equal precautions that have been in healthcare while we're dealing with the known infected individuals. I don't think anyone would make decisions based on old data that would be irresponsible. The state is open, the schools should be open with precautions that have been effective today. Please don't take a blind eye to the fact that efforts to date have been successful. Don't be short-sighted and serve agendas, serve the community. Parents do not make decisions to go hybrid and virtual based on infected thresholds. They make them based on the ability to work with live, work and live with the schedule that was created for in-person learning. The majority has spoken. You're ignoring the feedback from your stakeholders that, and this is not without consequence. Be better that you have seen in the world, rise above and don't stoop down. Your decision today is going to effectively paralyze the learning process and the children will not be able to recover. If not recovered from the end of last year, all of your educators will tell how the experience was until they came back in person. This will be a consequence to this now and down the road for all. With the metrics threshold, well, with the match, with the metrics threshold well established, regular checkpoints to assess changes in scientific evidence should be included. This would, this would have provided us the opportunity to adjust the metrics threshold based on science. This was unimplemented and now questioning thresholds, the model used calls into question the validity and motive for reevaluating the threshold.
Mr. Chairman, this Ben, Mr. Ben Ezra has made multiple comments. Are we gonna allow multiple comments from an individual or just one?
We could, we could, you know, we, we can go through.
Typically, someone gets their three minutes and I have not been keeping, uh, I'm not gonna do cumulative, uh, timing on each one of these comments.
I'll just, I'll just read through the, I'll just read through the comments. Hopefully, there's not much more. My daughter has a hard time sitting still. She has a hard time focusing. She blurts things out whenever she feels like it. She struggles to sit tight. She has a hard time waiting to be called on. Her impulsive are intense. She is a challenge for school teachers. We had a difficult first year at West Hills last year. We were able to get outside testing, which showed that she needs additional resources for learning. She now has an IEP and receives support for her school. Moving her from in-person school to virtual learning is detrimental to our progress. We are having the best year ever. Please do not halt our progress. Here's an email to support progress so far. Email comment from the speech teacher. I just wanted to update you on how is doing with her sound. She is making such great progress. I know you don't hear it at home, but I want you to ask her to make some sounds for you. She's progressing really well, working hard for me. I'm really pleased with the progress both with her sound and her language vocabulary skills. Keep up the great work. I'm absolutely shocked that the board is even entertaining talks about keeping sports co-curriculars on the board. However, special education is virtual and no discussion surrounds us. It's a very hu, hugely important topic. Get your priorities straight. Please do not do this to the children. I cannot. Okay, a couple more. Please do not do this to the children. I cannot believe that all the public comments from the parents, the board event had made the decision to go virtual. Board event has admittedly that they are not abreast on the latest science on data. It's shocking to me that they have made the decision on behalf of the whole district. Please give time to let a parent committee work with Pat Watson, discuss the metrics and data. We're lucky to have an elite group of parents that are in the top in their field. Top medical doctors, PhDs, top engineers, leading data analysts, CEOs and business owners. This caliber of parents are capable of making critical decisions like this on a daily basis. Pat Watson and the board need to utilize the unparalleled resources of knowledge and skills to make an educated, informed decision. Please give us the opportunity to make our case to overturn this decision. What's going on with the preschools and why are they canceled all week? Maybe daycares have remained open throughout the pandemic. Why shouldn't bloomers be different when it's in private? If the preschools close, will they be receiving credit? Will there be any kind of virtual learning? Will they open up sooner than schools, given that they are toddlers and they also have been known to transmit less and get sick less? I don't understand the extracurricular for school. I don't understand the extracurricular versus school. Gosh, if we wanted to decide on the question, would we please take a pause in shutting down the schools? Red doesn't mandate shutting down. If we, if we'll talk about it right, also, I'd love to be part of the committee that helps us figure out the path going forward. I'd love to help, lots to do. That's public comment, and I will now, it's been a long morning, I will now call for adjournment. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your time during this special meeting.